All right, we are broadcasting and we are recording. We have a live meeting. Can the clerk please read the roll call?
Ann Dixon?
Here.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Here.
Gary Cody?
Here.
Kimberly Shockley?
Here.
Ed Wazika?
Here.
Nicholas Gorm.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mrs. Dixon, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which deserves one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, the first item, please.
Approval of Town Council minutes, November 23rd, 2020.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
I second the motion.
Do we have any questions on the motion?
I did have one question. I did suggest one slight change to Joanne offline to change my miss to Ms.
And that will be corrected in the official minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any others? At that point, we have a first, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll on the vote, please?
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Minutes are accepted. We go on to Section B, which is the election of town council offices. Madam Clerk, the first item in that area?
Election for President of Town Council.
I'd like to nominate Ann Dixon. I'd like to nominate Ann Dixon for Town Council President.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Do we have a discussion on the motion?
I would like to say a couple things about this motion, please. What I find extremely concerning is that our Town Council agenda packet tonight has more pages of report for two National Grid poll locations than the election of our president and vice president. When a citizen wants to apply to the sewer subcommittee or planning commission, they'll provide a letter of interest and resumes so that we know their background, we know their level of experience, expertise, and interest. We have never discussed anybody's vision for this town. We've never discussed anybody's, if they have degrees, what those degrees are in. So I'm just extremely concerned that none of this type of information was shared before the election of officers.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Anyone else?
If I could, I just wanted to point out that other than some information in the charter and in the policies and procedures, I am unclear of what the president's role is. I know they lead the meeting. They are able to set the agenda for the meeting. But beyond that, you know, creating the decorum for the council, what are their other roles? What do they do that sets them apart from the rest of the council?
They are, one of their chief role is they are the chief executive of the town. Anything, any declarations, emergency declarations, everything that needs to be signed, that's all been, that's all handled by the council president. Mr. Gorm, if you, was there anything else you add in on that?
No, not really. I mean, the way the charter is, the council is a legislative body principally. The town manager performs executive functions on behalf of the town council. And so I think Mrs. Shockley's observation is correct, that it's in some ways ceremonial. There is not a great deal of substance to it, but I do think making the agenda is a very important task, and I've come to appreciate it more and more over the years. It dictates the pace and what the council hears, so it's important.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
If I may, I can tell you that when I was the president of the council from 2010 to 2014, on top of what Ed and Nick have stated, I can tell you that if the governor asked a representative from the town of Coventry to attend a meeting at the State House, it was the council president and the town manager who would attend those meetings at the State House. The town manager and the council president would meet with bond counsel and bring information back to the entire council. The council president and the finance director and the town manager would, on a yearly basis, when I was president, we would go to New York and meet with Moody's, and I would represent the council in that meeting as the council president and discuss with the council before that meeting occurred what their wishes, hopes, and desires were from Moody's as far as giving the town a bond rating and representing the town at our bond rating. So the president acts as, or can act as a liaison to any one of the boards or commissions that are established in the town of Coventry by charter. I often attended planning board meetings or zoning board meetings. Back then was when the Central Coventry Fire District was in financial trouble. As the council president, I acted as liaison between the council and the Board of Directors at the Central Coventry Fire District when the town wanted to be involved with that. So there are a lot of duties that although may not be specified in the council, I mean in the charter, that the council president absolutely assumes on behalf of the entire council, as well as, and I agree with what Mr. Gorm said, setting the agenda for the meetings and deciding what will be on that agenda and listening to the other council members' requests for agenda items and things like that. So yes, I think part of it is ceremonial, but I think a part of it is absolutely as a liaison representative for the entire council throughout the town.
And may I add that, based on my experiences, the council president does work on setting the agenda with the town manager, in this case, Mr. Wazika, but also the president does receive suggestions from, feedback from each of the council members. So they would be submitting ideas about what they would want on the agenda. So the agenda is really, I guess you could say, a cooperative effort among all the members of the council to set the agenda and to determine what should be on the agenda for each of the meetings that we have.
May I suggest that we call the vote, please?
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Aye.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
We have five to zero. The motion passes. Madam Chairwoman, I turn the meeting over to you.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, and if you have any questions about my education, I'm happy to give you the litany of the things that I have done. I'm happy to discuss that at any time at all, and I think that you will be well satisfied. But we can always discuss any questions that you have about me. Nominations for Vice President are now open.
I would like to nominate Jen Ludwig for Vice President of the council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Jen Ludwig as Vice President. We have a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to add a couple things. Ever since 2017, when the town council decided to push two astronomically expensive sewer projects, one being in the least economically advantaged area of town, I've attended every single town council meeting, and I've never heard or seen Ms. Ludwig share any of her ideas or concerns during any public hearings, budget meetings, budget workshops, or during any financial town meetings, nor have I heard her speak during public comment in all of those years prior to her announcing her candidacy. Prior to Mr. Shockley announcing her candidacy, however, she was the chair of the Charter Review Commission, has attended many town council and school committee meetings, and has also attended budget hearings and workshops, and has shared her ideas and concerns. And I believe she would be a great choice for Vice President. Therefore, for these reasons, I cannot support this motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
So rather than get into a back and forth, what I will say is that I think you're mistaken, Mr. LeBlanc. I have attended a number of meetings. I don't speak just to speak. I think there's a time for that, and I'm all about action. So I have served the town in several different capacities, such as being on the sewer subcommittee for the last two and a half years, and I continue to plan on, you know, helping the town and representing the people in my district as I've been doing. Thank you.
Those vacancies on the sewer subcommittee happened because of my actions, and I have certainly got legislation passed to protect a lot of residents in this town, almost $7,000 to $9,000. So trust me, I understand actions, and I've gotten it done.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. LeBlanc. Are there any other comments? Any other discussion? Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
I apologize. Are we voting on Jen being the Vice President?
Yes, we are, because the motion was made and seconded.
Okay, I wasn't, okay.
Okay. Ben Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
No.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is four to one. Ms. Ludwig, congratulations, you are the Vice President of the Coventry Town Council. And I do appreciate the comment you made, Ms. LeBlanc. Thank you so much. The next item is new president's remarks. So I do have some remarks, and I would like to make them now, and I'll be as quick as possible.
No, take your time.
First of all, I don't want, we have a long meeting ahead of us. First of all, Mr. Wazika, Mr. Gorm, staff members, council members, and members of the public who may be listening to this meeting, I do appreciate the vote of support that I received this evening with my election as Coventry Town Council President. I'm really very excited by the opportunity to lead, and I know that Ms. Ludwig will make a very fine Vice President. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm actually a second-generation American who grew up in a culture where the work ethic was exceedingly strong and honesty was highly valued. Working hard and smart has always been part of my DNA, and I carry these values to this role as president. I'm also known as a very goal-oriented person who has been guided by, for many years, by her bucket list. Those who know me, that travel anywhere is on my list. But never in my life did I have on my list to be a member of the Coventry Town Council and now its president. I believe that opportunity comes when you least expect it. What has been on my list all these years is this: regularly be actively involved in public service. From my early date as a young career woman, I've been a member and a leader on a number of public service groups. One of my very favorite volunteer activities was as an examiner for four years for the Rhode Island Quality Award and for the Malcolm Baldwin National Quality Award, where I read applications and visited schools and companies in Rhode Island and all over the United States. The stories of these applicants greatly inspired me. People working together can make a difference. In Coventry, I've been a member of the Charter review commission, the land trust, school committee, and town council, each of vastly different experience, but each providing insight into the fabric of our community. I do believe that trust in our town leadership can be regained. I do believe that our community culture can change. I do believe that the Coventry Public Schools can be a source of pride in our community. And I do believe that Coventry's town government can be efficient and effective and responsive to the needs of the citizens. We council members are starting anew as public servants. Each of our new council members have campaigned on a transformational platform, either through identified goals or personal traits. They are ready for action. Yet one council member alone cannot set the vision for our Coventry community. I would not be on the council if I did not believe that each iteration of a council membership should nurture and generously protect what previous councils have achieved for our community, and that each new council would strive to work as a team to develop a refreshed, robust, and vigorous vision for Coventry. Our role as a council is spelled out in the charter, Article III, with special attention to Section 312, powers and duties. Each council member should read our charter over and over and over, may also mention that a reading of the Rhode Island Open Meetings Act is required reading, as is the Rhode Island Code of Ethics. Tonight, I'm very excited by the prospect of leading a group of exceptionally talented, community-minded men and women. And to our community members who are listening, your council will set a collective vision with the members taking the lead and the community engaged in conversation. I fully expect that our experienced member, Gary Cody, and our new members, Jennifer Ludwig, Kimberly Shockley, and Jamie LeBlanc, will bring their talents forward, move Coventry out of the middle of the pack among Rhode Island towns and cities to a position as a top-four Rhode Island community, where people will want to live, raise a family, have fun, work, and retire. So thanks so much again. I'm happy to work with all of you. I'm anxious to do so, and I think council members, we're ready to begin. If there are any questions people want to ask me, we can do it offline. I don't think it's part of the agenda, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions about my education or experiences. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Ann.
Thank you so much, Gary. Thank you for nominating me, et cetera. I appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda for discussion in our action. In packet for November 30th, Section F2, there was approval for the National Grid Verizon poll location. Do I have any motion to accept that proposal?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? As I said before, this is your packet for November 30th.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just so I explain to the council, to the new members, who may not be familiar with these are, what happens with this. Anytime town property needs to be used by National Grid Verizon, already in the poll, because it's town property, the council has to give their authorization to allow this to go on. This is a routine that happens several times a year. In this case, one of them's being used to actually set up a guideline from an existing poll to support that poll, because the tree is died that they were using for in the guideline. The other one is to actually load balancing. There are a number of reasons why they do these, but they happen probably about five or six times a year on the purpose of it, and these are effectively just a, you are authorizing, it's a rubber stamp, it's something that we've gone through, looked at, and there's no issues when we bring this in front of the council. It's just so you're authorizing to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika, for your clarification and information. Are there any other questions by any member of the council? Okay, we have a motion to accept in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a joint meeting. It is scheduled for seven o'clock, so we'll have to take a short break between now, which is about 6:21, and we'll resume at seven o'clock. Mr. Wazika, do you want us all to go on mute and no video? How would you like us to handle that?
I would strongly suggest you mute your video and your audio and then come back to five minutes before to start. I apologize on this, there was miscommunication between us and school on setting this up. It was supposed to be starting at six.
Um, Ed?
First question?
I'm sorry, Dr. Dixon. Would it be okay, as it's not anything that's town's business, if the rest of the council introduced themselves in some way?
The problem with that is it's not on the agenda. I will put a section on there for Monday's, on the seventh meeting on Monday. I will put a section, oh, I can't. That agenda's been posted, the 14th, so we could all, so we could do that. And if you wanted to provide maybe even a resume from everybody, we'll post that as part of the official record, and then that way we could have that out, everybody can see it.
James is right, probably before we ran, that would have been good information.
Appreciate that.
So are we going to recess? Is that what we're going to do on a motion from the council?
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes, I'd like a motion to recess until seven o'clock this evening, when we will begin our joint meeting with the school committee. Do I have a second? A motion, please.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. Please put yourself on mute and silence your video and come back at five minutes of seven, please. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Kellunian, can you hear me? You're muted.
Talking to me, Ed?
No, Mrs. Kellunian.
Kellunian.
Donna, your mic is muted.
I'm muted. I did something to, I'm not showing.
Bob?
We see you, Donna.
Okay, now you don't, but I still don't see my name here.
Okay, you are, we are in?
Recession.
Yeah, we're in recession.
Yeah, until five minutes off, so if you would mute your mic, mute your video, and we'll be joining back in at five o'clock.
Okay, Ed, do you have the presentation for the school department ready to share, or is Sarah expected to share that?
I will let Sarah share it. I find it's easier if they can do what she needs to do.
Aye.
...
Congratulations, Ann.
Donna, thank you so much. You're very kind. I appreciate it.
I'm so happy for you.
Well, I'm excited. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. And the other four members of the council are just top-notch people.
Yeah, I think we got a good council.
It's going to be a joy. It's absolutely going to be a joy.
Donna, I'm really proud of you.
I may need to buy a bottle of aspirin. I don't know.
Or whiskey, Ann.
Yeah, I'm happy to post my three-page resume, so that's okay with me. I have no problem with that.
All right, thanks, Ann.
Thank you, anyway.
Mr. Dixon, I was thinking more like a 25-year-old Scotch would go really nice to help you ease out on those nights.
What are you suggesting?
A 25-year-old single malt Scotch would be really nice to take care, take the head off all those nights.
Well, you know what? If I gave it to my husband and then he went off in another corner and let me do my thing for the town council, everybody would be happy. Thank you.
And I think a nice bottle of Covid Cia.
Yeah, well, I'm waiting for a nice box of special cigars that Ed will pick out for me. So I think that would be, that would be a wonderful Christmas present.
Jen, congratulations. Kim, congratulations. Good to see you on the council.
Happy to you, too.
Nice to see you. Hi, Donna.
Hi, Dave.
So, Kim, you have two boys. You have two boys in school?
I do. Yep, I have an 11-year-old in the middle school and a nine-year-old at Washington Oak.
Wow. Well, and Jen, you have, you have triplets.
Uh, yeah, they're over at Washington Oak, so they're in Miss McDonald's kindergarten.
Oh, nice. That's a, that's a good, that's a good class. That's a really good class.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you like Ms. Mandisi. You guys must really like her.
Yes, yeah.
She's very...
Yeah, she's great.
We do have good principals, I'll tell you that. They're very, very nice people, huh, Donna? And, you know...
Our old assistant principals over at Blackrock, I think.
Yes, yes. The Jackard, Mrs. Jackard.
Just to advise everyone, this is going out.
Oh, okay. Well, it's nice that they know that they have kids, Ed.
Don, just making a statement, sir.
That's it. You know, Jamie has...
Please, everyone, excuse me, David, please, everyone put yourself on mute because we're not recording. Thank you.
You're welcome. A coffee cup salute to everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair. Hi, Donna McDonald.
Hi, good evening.
We're waiting for Gary to come back online.
I'm here, Ann.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, Miss...
Okay, it's, we're gonna have, I'd like, thank you for joining us today. I'd like a motion to come out of recess from a member of the town council.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Gary. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a second. Who was that, please?
That was Jamie.
Jamie, thank you, Jamie. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
You muted Jo- Joanne.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Emily Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Right now, like a motion from a member of the town council to open a joint meeting with the school committee.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Ann.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Emily Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. I'd like to welcome the members of the school committee. Mr. Levis, Mr. Coward, and I'm seeing Ms. Mangiarelli, welcome. And Mrs. Patino, would you please open the joint meeting with your school committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to call our meeting to order. I have 7:02. Could we have a roll call from Mrs. McDonald, please?
Yes. Kathy Patnod?
Here.
Dave Florio?
You're muted, Dave.
Dave, you're muted. I see you. Luke Murray?
Here.
Donna Colonian?
Here.
James Pearson?
Present.
Craig Levis?
Here.
Don Coward?
Here.
Darah Mangiarelli?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to allow each member of the town council to introduce himself or herself, because some of you have seen these people for the first time, and we'll also do that with the school committee. So we'll start with Kimberly.
Hi, nice to meet everyone formally. My name's Kimberly Shockley, and I represent District Five for the Coventry Town Council.
Thank you. Kim Jumper?
Hello, I'm Jen Ludwig, and I am representing District Two.
Thank you. Jamie?
Jamie the Blank, representing District Three.
Uh, Gary?
Hi, Gary Cody. We all know each other. Nice to see you folks again. I'm having a little trouble with my video, but I can see you guys, so welcome.
And we'll also offer the same opportunity to members of the school committee. Uh, Mrs. Patino, would you like to introduce the members of your committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My name's Kathy Patnod, and I represent District Two. How about Mr. Pearson?
Hello, James Pearson. I represent the people of District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Florio?
Thank you for the courtesy, Madam Chair. My name is Dave Florio. I represent the constituents of District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Uh, Mrs. Colonian?
I am Donna Colonian. I represent District Three.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Murray?
Hi, Luke Murray, District One Community Representative. Thank you.
And Mr. Wazika, you have, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Patino, do you have other members of the school staff who have been introduced themselves?
We had some difficulty hearing you, Ann.
Okay, could you introduce the other members of the school staff who are joining us this evening?
Okay, Mr. Levis, did you want to do that?
Sure, I'm Craig Levis. I'm the superintendent of public schools. We have Mr. Coward, Don Coward, who's the assistant superintendent. We have Ms. Sarah Mangiarelli, who's our director of finance, and Mrs. Donna, Mrs. Donna McDonald, who's the secretary to the school committee.
And one other person we did not introduce, a very important person for us, is Mr. Arnett. Would you like to say hello?
Hello, John Arnett, Finance Director for the...
Thank you so much. This is a workshop to discuss the 2021 budget. There will be no voting this evening. We will not discuss any other subject other than the budget that each of us is presenting. At the end of this workshop, I'll ask for a consensus from the town council whether we want to ask Mr. Wazika to prepare a formal budget recommendation to us, which we will discuss on December 14th, at which time we will vote. So the subject tonight is simply the 2021 budget with a presentation by the school committee and by Mr. Wazika. So this is Mangiarelli, or I'm sorry, Mr. Levis, would you like to begin, please, with the budget for the school?
Sure, I'm gonna ask Mr. Wazika, I don't know if we have screen share rights, if Mangiarelli can put up the...
She has them, sir. She's already got them.
So while, while Ms. Mangiarelli is putting up our, our presentation, which really are talking points, first, I just want to congratulate the, the new council members. I want to congratulate Dr. Dixon, being town council president, and Mrs. Jen Ludwig for the vice president. I know I've spent almost 100 meetings with myself and Mr. Pearson with Dr. Dixon in terms of the policy subcommittee. And, you know, I'm just extremely hopeful. I sent an email a couple of weeks ago, and somebody said, "Hope's not a plan." But, you know, the, these times are extremely challenging for all of us. You know, collectively, we have hundreds and hundreds of employees in this community that are working for the 40,000 citizens. And I'm extremely hopeful, working with the school committee and in the council, moving forward, just having open and honest conversation and dialogue that will be able to address the needs of all the citizens of this community. You know, tonight, we want to present our current reality, but I also want to say there, again, we hope that there'll be a lot of dialogue and conversation tonight. I want to thank Ms. Mangiarelli for all her effort in putting our budget together, also sharing this document with the school committee, the town council. And Ms. Mangiarelli also sent out another document to clarify. And so, again, I'm going to thank the council. I want to thank the school committee. And I'm extremely inspired about moving forward. And again, I know we have so many challenges that we face every single day. And I know that the budget has been an extremely challenging area that we haven't been able to really overcome. But I'm extremely, again, hopeful, working together. And having said that, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Mangiarelli. And again, we hope to have how we want, you know, do this, if there's questions during, if you want to wait till afterwards. But I'm hoping to really have dialogue, to make sure that when people walk away from tonight, that they fully understand what our needs are in, in, in any questions about this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everybody see the presentation that's up on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So first, before I get started, I do want to thank and welcome the council. I know in watching a lot of the school committee meeting, you know that almost all of you have been on most of the school committee meetings. So I know you've heard a lot of these budget presentations. As Mr. Levis said, I know that this can come off, you know, a little bit strong, I guess. But I think the reality is, you know, we're halfway through this year, so we didn't necessarily want to sugarcoat where we're at. We really need to lay this all out on the line and, and start to move forward. So we'll get right into it. And then if you want to pause or interrupt as we go along or at the end, either way is, is fine. This is definitely an open dialogue, so we can start to move forward. So just a quick review of the budget process, and I'm not going to go through every detail on here, but the, the general consensus is that we've been consistent as a school from the very beginning, that we needed the full, you know, 1.8 million from the local appropriation increase. Almost half of that is due to the loss in safety fees made when we started off. Even to get down to the 1.8 million ask, we had to cut out about $1.5 million worth of expenses. We did that through non-item reductions and reopening the T... contract, and then also offering retirement incentives to try and move some of the higher-cost personnel off and make room for some of the lower-cost personnel to come on. The last budget presentation that we put forward on November 5th, was local appropriation funded, level funded. That was the result of the second budget failing in the community. We had to make drastic measures to reduce expenses to live within those constraints. And even when we did that, we received new information, specifically added district tuition and statewide transportation costs that... tuition and statewide transportation costs that significantly increased on any of our estimates, resulting in further adjustments that had to be made. So all along, we had said that the savings from FY 2020 should have been used to cover COVID expenses, because those were supposed to be one-time expenses. We never wanted to use FY 2020 savings to fill operating gaps, because that creates a, a long-term structural issue. With the level funding of the appropriation, as well as the additional cost that came in right at the end of October, actually, is when we got those, those final estimates, we had to shift the FY 2020 savings from the COVID budget over to the operating budget. That makes a structural issue in FY 2021. And it left the ask from the town for rainy day or surplus funds of the 1.5 million out of, to cover the COVID costs. So that's where we're currently positioned. We were asked.
Excuse me, this is Ms. Mangiarelli, I'd like to get back to.
If the third budget was to go to the community, what the.
Ms. Mangiarelli, I'd like to pause for one. Is there any member of the council who would like to ask any questions on this slide first? Do you want to wait, or do you have a question? Okay, Ms. Ludwig?
Um, yeah, actually, so firstly, I'm not sure if it's someone's feedback, but there's, if anyone else is experiencing it or not, but I am hearing a little bit of feedback when you're talking. So Sarah, I'm sorry, Ms. Mangiarelli, I don't know if that's you, or if it was President Dixon, just as a heads up. So I just want to make sure, I know that you've said this several times. I've listened into some of these meetings, and I just want to reiterate, I guess, at this point, there were savings from 2020 from, from all the students having to do the distance learning, and I guess what you're calling the COVID savings from last school year. And that was applied. So there were savings, and it needed to be applied to the operating budget. Right?
Yes, it needed to be applied to the operating budget based on what most recently happened. But all along, we had been showing the FY 20 savings going towards COVID costs. But yes, all along, we have definitely received savings from FY 20, and those have been accounted for throughout the whole budget process.
And could you also just give us a little bit more of the summary on, and I know that, I know that we've talked about this in other forums, I just want to be very clear in this forum. The, the local appropriation level funding item, can you just go into that just a little bit more, to give the background there on when that was discovered? Because I believe that was from a meeting, if I'm not mistaken, in either early November or late October, that we said that that was or was not going to be added in.
Exactly what you're. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to with the local appropriation amount. We've been asking for the 4% increase all along. We accounted for it not being received officially in the November 5th budget, when the second budget failed. So that, that local appropriation amount is the amount that we were asking the Town of Coventry to fund the schools. So we were asking for a $1.89 million increase in funds coming from the town from FY, from FY 2020.
So in both instances, you're saying that it's a makeup of the prior funding that's needed. So for example, from the state aid. Because I think the number, it might be later on in the presentation, but just so I have the, the full picture here, the, the state aid was approximately, I think it was 987 less than we thought it would be? And just approximately, when did we find that out?
Okay, so when we started the budget, yeah, when we started the budget process in, you know, last winter, we knew that we were receiving a cut in state education aid. So we were looking at about $700,000 cut originally, and then it went up to about, you know, the $800,000 level as we progressed. So what I was saying is that when we asked for a $1.8 million increase from the town from the very beginning, almost half of that was not going towards new expenditures or new initiatives, or even covering costs. It was simply to cover the cut in state aid that we were experiencing, and that was pre-COVID. So then, as we continued along, you know, we had always been saying that we needed that increase from the town, and then, then COVID hit. So then our expenditures increased even more, putting more pressure on identifying revenue sources to cover the costs, both from the cost of our normal operations, to cover the the cost of the cut in state aid pre-COVID. And then, yes, currently, we are receiving less state education aid than originally indicated. But a lot of that is because we don't have the state budget, and we don't know what that, what the state budget is going to look like, even for this fiscal year. So there's a possibility, above and beyond everything that's being talked about tonight, there is a possibility that we could receive less state education aid than even being presented tonight.
Okay, are there any other questions from any other council members on this particular slide right now?
Sarah, this is Jamie. You, you mentioned it, and it's on this slide, increases in out-of-district transportation and tuition. Can you just speak to, I think the comment you made was, it was even higher than what you had originally budgeted. How much more are we talking about for those, those two line items?
So the, the biggest hit that we took is actually the out-of-district transportation. So we use, you know, statewide transportation. We had $488,000 budgeted in the previous budget. And the most recent information that came from, that came from the state was over 1.1 million. Their excuse is additional sanitation costs, more buses that have to be run. You know, again, this is just our share of the statewide portion. So that right there impacted us. And then I want to say we're about, I'd have to pull up the last budget, but we are a couple hundred thousand over in out-of-district tuition as well. But the biggest hit is by far the transportation. And we are currently trying to work and see if we can make some arrangements with our existing bus company to handle that, but we are, we are not there yet. And we have some other things going on that are points of communication in our negotiations with the, with the transportation company now, even just based on how we're operating this school year, with the Mondays being non-transportation days for us.
The additional detail, I appreciate it.
Welcome. Are there any other questions from any other council member, Ms. Ludwig?
Ms. Mangiarelli, can you please just give a few more examples? I think you gave one example in the third bullet, where you talked about some of the school budget reduced expenditures. Could you just give a few examples there? I think you mentioned the the co-pay costs as one example during, when you were speaking a few minutes ago. Was that included there in that reduced expenditures number of the 1.5?
Right, so for us to get a balanced budget even back in January, we had to reduce expenses by, you know, or this one was May, in January it was 1.3, May it was 1.5. We had to reduce line item expenditures. So we had over a half a million dollars come out of contract negotiations, retiree savings. We made additional supply reductions. We had planned on the phasing out of certain staffing for special education. At the time, our actually out-of-district transportation was supposed to go down based on some of the population that was shifted. I'm just trying to go off of memory. It's been a little while since I looked at that $1.5 million cut, because that was back, like I said, very pre-COVID. So, but yes, we've made, we made quite a, quite a few adjustments, but a big chunk of that did come from the negotiation component of it, as well as the early retirement incentive.
Other questions from the town council? Ms. Shockley?
Thank you. So Sarah, that out-of-district transportation, should we expect, in a perfect world, that next year, it will go back down to more what we would have budgeted for it? Because of, it seems like a COVID expense. Am I correct on that, the extra $700,000?
So I would say that that is the way that the state spun it, is yes, it's a COVID-related expense. I, I would love to say that that will go down next year. I would assume that it would, based on the, the explanations that they gave.
If not next year, then post-COVID, I guess.
Um, right, so I would, I would like to think that that would go down. I think we all know the condition of the state in general, so I'm hoping that this is not a way to shift funds over to communities to help offset some of the costs. But yes, in a perfect world, that number should go back down. That is somewhat of a wild card number, because we don't really get to control that. So there are a lot of rules and regulations regarding esses kids. And Mr. Levis can jump into that, or Mr. Coward, too.
I just want to, want to say about the transportation.
Go into more detail, not if, if you feel that you need more information. Yes, but so that really is a cost that we can't, is harder for us to control, because if we're told to transport a student, we, there are certain students that we absolutely have to, have to transport. So that number in and of itself is a little bit hard to pinpoint. But yes, I do hope that that number drops back down to a more reasonable level going forward.
Mr. Levis, did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, basically, the state had vendor that provided transportation for districts, for out-of-district students, students that are foster children that move. And this year, our vendor, Ocean State, used to be that, their vendor. They didn't have a vendor, so the contract that is being passed on to us, they had to guarantee 180 days. So we're paying, we're paying all the additional costs, the districts are. So, but I just want the committee, the council to know, we are constantly looking at ways to, to lower these expenses. At one point, we had talked about purchasing vehicles, purchasing vans, that would be appropriate by the Department of Transportation, where we could hire drivers and transport some of these students ourselves. But, you know, obviously, because of the funding and lack of funds, we are not able to do that. But we're working with our current vendor. They had given me a proposal that'll save some money, Ocean State, that we need to work with on our attorney. So we're always, we're not just accepting this, but for budgetary purposes, we just received this information, what, maybe two weeks ago? Two and a half weeks ago, that the, the rate was going up from, like I said, what we expected, $400,000. So, you know, we're, we're seeing more and more of that, that, that's being passed down to the district. So that's what, that's our current.
Okay, are there any other comments by members of the council on this particular slide? Mrs. Patino, do you want to entertain any questions from your members?
Sure. Are there any questions from Mr. Florio? Hearing none.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Many times.
Mr. Murray, do you have any questions?
Another question, just a, just a point to Ms. Ludwig's earlier question, is that it is important to remember, because this has gone on for so long, that this budget process started last December. So we were well aware of the need to cut out of the 3.2 million or 3.3 million that we were facing. We needed to cut down that 1.5. And that was done in a myriad of areas, including cutting programs, renegotiating contracts, and other things that Ms. Mangiarelli had said. So we already went into that 1.8, having already cut 1.5. And that was to try to get us to a, a pre-COVID, we, COVID wasn't on the horizon yet. So it's important to know that, right now, we've basically taken one-time COVID funding and plugged the gap in our budget. But now that's going to compound, and that's what, what Sarah's been saying, is that that is structurally next year, that money, because it was one time, that money goes away. So now we're going to be facing double the trouble next year. And that's kind of how the, you know, the basics have followed the bouncy ball here. You know, that's important to realize that where we started and where we're at, and we're still fighting that same argument, not fighting, talking about the same thing, you know, nine or 10 months later. Thank you.
Great, thank you. What on, Mr. Murray? Mrs. Colunian?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Pearson?
No questions. I, I do like this slide, because I think with the new council members, it's good to give some background on how we got to where we are today. So thank you for that.
Great. We're done, Ms., Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Mangiarelli, would you go to Slide Two, please?
Yes, so when we were getting ready for this presentation, we were asked if the, if the new council decided to entertain going back out to the community for a third attempt at an FY 2021 budget, what would be the bare minimum that we would need to operate? This isn't actually as easy as it looks on this slide, because I think some of the things that are currently in the budget or are not in the budget is not necessarily how we want our community to operate. However, this is the budget that we're currently operating under. So I had said that at a bare minimum, we would need the 1.578 million. That number can be seen on the budget from November 5th. On the, I believe it's the second page, there is a use of fund balance for school lunch and a use of fund balance for operations on the revenue side. If you add those two numbers together, you come up with a 1.578 million. What I was doing is I was using the FY 20 carryover in those two figures to plug the FY 21 budget gap. If the council went out for a third attempt, the minimum that I would recommend being asked for is the 1.578 million. What I would then do is take that 1.578 million from my operating budget and put it in my COVID budget, and not ask the town for funds to cover the COVID expenses as it, as they're currently playing out. However, the budget that we have presented right now, that's balanced with that 1.5 million, does not include the sports and extracurricular activities. It doesn't include the Chromebooks, the physical plant vehicles, and capital maintenance. We're close, but if we don't complete all of the COVID-related expenditures that we need to, we will probably fall short on that capital maintenance amount. That number, or that point is important to note for next year. Because we did not meet the maintenance requirement in FY 2020, the state did redirect money that was supposed to go to the town for the offset of bond payments in the amount of $439,000. And they redirected it to the school-for-school maintenance. That is included in my budget, that $439,000 amount. It's helpful for the school, but from the town perspective, I don't think it's ever a win when you lose money that's slated to pay debt. So that's one that, you know, we do want to make sure that we keep our eye on that capital maintenance, because I think it's, it's tough to get into a situation where you have a redirection of revenue, and, and it leaves the town in a, in a shortfall position. So if we wanted to get some of these things back, again, I don't think that I would recommend Chromebooks coming back this fiscal year. We haven't even received the Chromebooks that we ordered for the elementary schools at the end of the summer, because of the delay in manufacturing to get them shipped. So I think that that's something that we could push into FY 20 22 regardless. You know, sports and extracurricular, we know that they're running a modified schedule. A lot of activities and clubs wouldn't be able to run this year anyways. But I think if we want to see some of those things go back in, and we want to maintain and preserve the activities that we have, the original request of the $1.8 million is what I would recommend that the council moves forward with, both for this fiscal year, and also to ensure some stability for the budget, or at least to put us in a better situation for next fiscal year. I do have the physical plant vehicles on here, and I did want to note that our vehicles were just recently vandalized, actually, this week significantly. So we did file a claim on that. They are also well, well past their useful life. And I think that that is something, you know, while all things are important, I think the physical plant vehicles fall in just as bad of a category as, as our condition of a lot of our facilities. So I, I do think that that is an expense that we need to incur this year or next year at the very, very latest, just based on the condition of those vehicles. But so that, I know that there was some confusion about saying. But so that, I know that there was some confusion about saying we're going to ask for 1.5 million, and we're still not bringing everything back. And my simple answer is no, unfortunately, we have gone this entire budget season saying we needed that 1.8 million. We already cut out everything that we could cut out. So if we want to preserve all of this stuff, the 1.8 is really where we need to be. The minimum to run this budget without using one-time revenue stream for FY 2020 is 1.57 million. So I can pause there for questions on the slide.
Mrs. Manjrielli, I do have a question. We're halfway through the school year, and the amount of money, the amount of money that you're asking for is what you were asking for if the budget year had begun, or the budget had been approved in July. And so now, the earliest it possibly could be approved is sometime in January. So why do you still need the same amounts that you needed in June or July now?
So the budget that we presented really didn't add anything new. Anything that was extra above and beyond, new, nice-to-haves, we pretty much cut out with that $1.5 million. So the expenses that we have presented are the expenses that we're incurring now. It's not like we had new positions in here, or new initiatives that we had in here, that we said, okay, we'll hold off on these and see if we get a budget. This is actually what we're operating under. So one way or another, I'm going to need to plug that hole with either carryover or additional funds coming in. So, you know, our salary costs are what we are. We had some adjustments, but, you know, we didn't make additional staffing reductions or delay hiring when the first budget failed in July. We had to move forward, and if anything, we had to hire, you know, additional staff, add a district tuitions, and transportation and all that. That, all of those expenses are happening, somewhat irrelevant, unfortunately, of the budget being passed.
Okay, thank you.
Really, the only thing that I could do was hold the reins on supplies and equipment purchases that were going to be used in the classroom.
Okay, the other question I have has to do with this $439,000. And I'm not really sure that I quite understand how it's being redirected from the town to the school. Could you explain better? What is the situation, and what is the resolution for this situation?
Yes, so a few years ago, a state law was passed. And I'd have to pull up the actual general law number, but I can send it over. It's a maintenance-of-effort requirement for investing in school facilities. So it's for maintenance only, it cannot be used for regular cleaning, custodial costs. It's truly the maintaining and building improvements of your school facilities. The intent was to ensure that schools were properly, or communities were properly investing to make sure that their structures were being taken care of. There was a phase-in approach. So I believe we started off that you had to put a half a percent of your total operating budget in to be spent on maintenance, and that amount increases every year until you get it to a threshold of 3%. In FY 2020, Coventry did not meet that maintenance.
I think we lost Sarah for a little bit.
Yeah.
But I can just finish her.
Okay, great.
Finish your sentence. There she goes.
Can you hear me still?
So what Sarah was saying is that, that general law said that every year, we had to put a half a percent in the budget for maintenance. And so that goes up to 3%. And so what happens is, if we don't meet that threshold, any housing aid that we're due, the state doesn't take. They put it in a restricted account. What we didn't know was that, before any housing aid would be delivered to the town, what the state did is, they scooped that, took that money, and put it in that restricted account, which happened to be $439,000. And that money is in an account that can only be used by the schools for maintenance. So that's where we're at now. That money was taken away from the town, that the town was going to use, I believe, for debt service. And it can be, it can only be used by the schools now. And so what that means is that, moving forward, before any housing aid comes back to the town, if we don't meet our threshold next year, which I believe is 2%, then what will happen is, any housing aid that's due to the town, they will take that, up to that 2%, and put that in a restricted account that would go again for the schools towards maintenance. So on the town side, you know, obviously, this impacts all of us. But we need to be thinking, moving forward next year, that if we are not in our operations, operational budget, if we don't have that 2% put in for maintenance, then no housing aid will come back to the school or the town. And if there is housing aid, it'll go into that restrictive account. So I think in terms of the town budgeting, that's important to look at, too, when we're talking about our budget moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Does any other member of the council have a question on this particular subject that you'd like to expand on at this time?
Madam President, I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
I know we're on a level-funded budget currently, and I know we're obviously trying to cut expenses. But I do know that stipends have been distributed. I just didn't know, I'm assuming that's an added cost, not a budgeted one. I didn't know how much those stipends have cost us year-to-date. I also know that there were raises to substitute teachers. I know, I don't think that was budgeted either, so in this level of budget that we're in, those expenses wouldn't be included. And so what would the impact be to those? And then my final question on the funding side is, will we be receiving federal funds for COVID? And have we, and if not, will we be receiving some funds?
Yeah, so, and hopefully, I don't cut out again, I apologize for that. So just to take those one at a time, so yes, stipends were given, but I think it's important to note that we actually gave stipends because we chose not to hire a director of curriculum. So we had our assistant superintendent leave and go to a different district. Don Coward, who was the director of curriculum at the time, moved into the assistant superintendent position, and then the director of curriculum position went unfilled. So we did give stipends, because we redirected work to additional, I'm sorry, redirected work to existing staff. But overall, even though we did those stipends, we still saved about $130,000 by not hiring that person back, or by not filling that position of a salary and benefits. So I actually, the move that was made, from a district perspective, saved funds. I don't know if operationally, it was the best long-term strategy, because there is a body of work that needs to be done in a curriculum world. But we did do that with the intent of saving funds, which is what happened, even though we did, yes, give certain individual stipends, there was an overall savings to the district because of that move. As far as increasing the substitute rates, that was done, because there has been a substitute shortage in Rhode Island for quite some time. We knew that with COVID, districts were going to be fighting each other for substitute. We increased rates, I increased that in the budget. So the budget that you see is reflective, including the operating, as well as the COVID budget, reflects what I'm hoping we will spend on substitute costs, including the increased rate that was there. We also did receive a grant from the state of Rhode Island for substitute costs. It's not significant, but it does offset some of those costs as well. And then as far as the federal funds, we'll receive about $1 million in federal funds. For COVID, we received $747,000 from the Impact Aid, and about $600,000 in Esser funds. Part of those were reported in the FY 20 fiscal year, so it's about $1 million that's hitting us in FY 21. The $747,000, I was able to request in advance, which has helped with cash flow, because we requested all of that before we had even expended all of those costs. And I think that was it, that I hit, I think I hit all your.
No, you did a great job, I appreciate that. And then, this question is just for Ed, I think, is, if we were to level fund everything except for give the schools this 1.6 million, what rate are we talking about for a tax rate for the taxpayers to pay? Is it a 1.8%? Is it 2.2%?
It's actually, it's actually a 2.2% increase, which would amount to about a .47 per thousand increase overall on the current tax rate, which the bills that were just put out at.
But that would not give the town anything. It would just purely be the schools, and it would be a 2.2%.
2.2 would be simply for the schools, without any addition from the town.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions on this slide number two budget request? Mrs. Shockley?
Thank you. First, I just want to clarify my understanding, and then I have an additional question. So once the budget was level-funded officially in November, you took 1.34 million from COVID savings, put it in the budget. This 1.5 would now go to pay COVID expenses, where the 1.3 was originally going to go. Is that correct?
No, no. If the town went back out and we received the 1.5 million, that the 1.5 million that I have in the operating budget would go into the COVID budget and replace, it's on page three, you have that FY 21 budget, it says use of fund balance, town fund balance. That's where we were requesting rainy day funds from the town. So I'm basically going to use FY 20 carryover and cover COVID costs with that, should we receive additional appropriations, and not ask the town for use of rainy day funds, with the caveat that state education aid comes in at the level that we have in this budget. So no, the 1.3 is really money that we had already cut, if that's what you're referring to on the last slide. But the FY 20 carryover money, yes, would be used to cover COVID.
Yeah, that was 1.34, too, right, the carryover money?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought that that is what the slide said, but I do have people hiding the end of my. But would you mind going back, is anyone?
No, that was what, yeah, that was, right, right here, my preliminary estimate, yes. In the budget that I'm showing right now, I'm showing 1.5 million. So that 1.3, oh gosh, I changed, yeah, sorry. There we go. You're looking at right under the July 23rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so that is the same bucket of money. I've just increased it in the FY 20 budget that's presented now. I'm sorry, FY 21 budget.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask more about that capital expenditure money. Because I also just, I appreciate that President Dixon asked, but what does that cover? Because this is money you weren't expecting, am I correct? It was supposed to be given to you, but it had never been budgeted for. Am I correct on that?
Right, well, that's the proportion of the amount of money that we should have spent last fiscal year on capital. So yes, I have shifted that $439,000 into the COVID budget. So there was a lot of indoor air quality work, that was, we had a consultant come in. So the total bill was actually closer to $800,000 that we were looking for. So that $439,000 will go towards the indoor air quality work that was identified by the consultant. We will get housing aid reimbursement on that at 44%, because it will be deemed emergency health safety because of COVID and because of the repairs that we're looking to do. So the school will get 44% back next year, which is great, because that will be slated to spend on capital improvements for next year. So we will start that ball rolling a little bit, of where we're spending and getting, you know, money returned on, return on our investments. So that's how that $439,000 will be used. And if you look on page three of the November 5th budget, you will see that money budgeted in as COVID revenue.
And, you know, I would want to know from our end, what's the impact for the town there? As we weren't, you know, the town side wasn't expecting that expense either.
That's a good question. I'll answer that, Ed, if you, if you'd mind.
Yeah, my plan on that was, I mean, it was extra money coming from the town that was meant to go to the town. So it would be a shift of just a funding source, instead of it coming from the regular piece of it, that that $439 isn't free money to them, to the school side, on top of, it's got to be made up for on our side. It was meant for housing aid, we didn't get it. It went into a direct account to cover maintenance costs that they're restricted to. So that's cost that would have come out of the regular budget. So it's just a shifting of where that general budget is coming from, not a free $439,000 to them. John, do you agree?
It's pretty close. I think that's an easy way to explain it. It's just, really, just, rather than going, passing through, it's going directly to them.
Great, so that money was slated to offset bond payment.
Correct, in which, in which case.
So, and that's why I said it's a benefit to the school, but wasn't it? Isn't that housing aid reimbursement that you use to pay bond payments?
Correct, and in this budget, because of everything going on with going on with the state, I slightly under-budgeted that line item, thank goodness. Because now that that dropped down, it's still, now it's not going to meet up exactly to that line item, but with other things that have come in this year, it's sort of going to wash itself out, so it'll be okay. Yes, it does hurt, it's definitely going to hurt at the end. I would love to see that, it would have been great to have the full amount come through. But yes, what happens is, is now, now when I would, I would recognize that total amount that should be passing through. I now have to, I'm going to get less if we don't, if we don't hit that capital. I still pay the, I still pay the bond and debt services. You're right, I still pay it, but I won't, I don't see that offset.
Mrs. Shockley, you have another question?
Just to come off of that, what are we budgeted to give them their 2021 funds for capital maintenance?
We haven't started off on, oh wait, this is.
That's this one.
Yeah, we've done this so many times, I'm losing track of where we are. On what I have right now for coming in, I think I have it at 1.09.
You have it at 1.09, what?
I don't have it up on their slide, but I have, that's what I have budgeted coming in, but they're going to have it dropping down. I should be, when we redo the next budget, I will have to amend that number back, just down, I'm going to lose that revenue to offset.
But shouldn't it be offset for, in the budget we're working on right now?
Well, we are working on presenting a town-side budget, which will show that revenue line item.
Okay, thanks, John.
Any other questions? Are we ready? Ms. Ludwig, do you have a question?
This is a little bit more on the bottom half of the slide. So President Dixon, I don't know if you are ready to go in there, but.
Are you talking about this slide, or?
This slide.
Like, this slide?
This slide.
Okay, continue on this slide.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So the 1.578 here, that's, that is, that is not including the four bullets below. And there's two items on this list that I just want to know if you can talk a little bit more about. The plant vehicles, physical plant vehicles, just in general, what type of vehicles are needed? Are these buses and things? As I thought we were, just talked about that being contracted out. What are the vehicles we're talking about?
These are the vehicles that our maintenance staff use, as well as plow trucks. So I think we had one van and a few plow trucks on here. So, and I'm sure we can give another presentation on the condition of our vehicles, but most of our vehicles are, you know, over 20 years old, 200,000-plus miles on them. They've been in pretty poor condition, and this has been something that we've been wanting to do for several, several years. I actually really thought we were going to be able to do it last fiscal year. This would be a capital lease that we would enter into. I had looked at a four-year term, and it would be about $32,000 per year. Just so you know that the council does approve capital leases, even the ones. Just so you know that the council does, does approve capital leases, even the ones that the schools entered into. So if we went forward with the Chromebook capital lease or vehicle capital lease, the town council does, does approve those lease agreements for us. So, yeah, this is, again, we can share the presentation that had been done previously, but this is what our maintenance crew uses on a daily basis.
Okay. And then the second item, the Chromebooks for grade, grade six to 12. Can you just, I, I do have children in the school system, but they're, they're much younger than this grade. Can you just describe, is this, is this a Chromebook program or what, what is it that we do for the students?
Yep. So we are a one-to-one district from grades six through 12. We did buy with some of the COVID federal funds Chromebooks for some of the elementary grades. Again, those haven't come in yet, even though we bought those several, several months ago. So this would be the, the third round of Chromebook financing. They typically enter into three-year capital leases for these devices. And then they're, you know, we renew and get a new set of devices. Three years is pretty much at their max life, just based on the student usage of them. We do save any old devices and those become the loner devices for students who break, damage, lose their, their devices. We were supposed to enter into a new lease as of July 1 with a new round of financing. We obviously could not do that. So the grades are six or 12 are using the old devices from last year. The biggest concern with that right now is that they're actually not under warranty. So if anything's breaking, we are replacing those one-off or, or cycling them in with some of the older devices that we have. They had, the district had entered into a self-insured insurance program previously that cost them quite a bit of money that we had to, to get out of. But, so this is something that we do every three years because the primary instructional equipment that's used at grade six through 12 are Chromebooks for all students. Mr. Coward and Mr. Levis, if you want to add anything. For that, that's more your wheelhouse than mine.
Just the, uh, the issue we have now is that we have Chromebooks that are actually being utilized. Cause like in any given point, as, you know, anybody with children, the school system knows that we could be out tomorrow. That's our current reality. So we've given a lot of the older Chromebooks to the elementary school students. And they're beyond, many of them are beyond their life expectancy. So at some point, we're going to need to purchase the, the additional Chromebooks. Like I said, we're supposed to enter this agreement in July. So that's why we purchased the, the Chromebooks to the elementary students because many of the Chromebooks that we've given out, we can't repair. They're beyond, you know, if they break, they're, we, that's it. So, so they're important for us. At some point, we're going to need to incorporate this back in into our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Shockley, do you have another question?
I just. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cody, can you?
Yeah, I just want to address the vehicles that they're using at the physical maintenance plant, which is now next door to my house. I see the vehicles often and just for anybody's inquiry about them, I wouldn't drive some of them from the physical plant, the physical maintenance plant to Dunkin' Donuts to get coffee. And these people are using them to, to plow parking lots and, and, and plow out schools and deliver supplies from the physical maintenance plant out to the different schools. Some of them are horrendous. I don't know how they still pass inspection. So when they say that some of their vehicles at the physical maintenance plant need to be retired and replaced, I can attest to the fact that that is absolutely one of the truest statements you're going to hear at this meeting tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Cody. And I believe that Mr. Levis has said that he has received complaints from people who live in that neighborhood wondering why there is a junkyard at that school. And actually the junk that is being referred to, the trucks that are in active service for our, our school community. Okay. I, I would like to suggest we go on to the next slide. Okay, Ms. Mandrelli.
Okay, so, um, this again is another question that, that was asked. You know, we've spent several, several months just talking about numbers and budget gaps and you know, more the, more than a degree of it, rather than getting into, okay, what does this actually mean for our schools? So, you know, we have had year-over-year cuts. And again, that's, that's been a long thing coming. You know, this definitely didn't happen overnight. I would say without question, it has to do with the instability in the state education aid and the funding formula. You know, if you've ever been to the legislative meetings, I've said at every single one, there needs to be some change changes to that because I don't understand how, you know, we can have a million dollar increase one year and then a million dollar decrease the next year. It's mind boggling that that's acceptable at the state level when there's a maintenance of effort requirement at the local level. So this definitely isn't just a, you know, a town of Coventry issue that we need to face, although there are some nuances that, you know, Coventry as a community does need to address. We have seen for the past several years, a significant increase in our non-special education tuition. Those are students leaving us, yes, to go to charter schools, but the most significant increase has been leaving us to go to other non-public, I'm sorry, other public high schools. So, you know, should we continue down this path where we're, we're looking at constant cuts year over year? We're cutting programs and we're cutting our ability to reinvest in pretty much everything. Our infrastructure to our curriculum, to our, you know, to the programs that we're offering, to the value adds that we add to our students, such as, you know, the, all the extracurricular clubs and, and sports activities. And I, I do think that should we continue this trend, that we should expect to have our out-of-district tuition numbers continue to climb. I, I think even in the years that we've been able to muddle through, we have seen an increase in out-of-district tuition, I think just because of the uncertainty of what's going on. You know, we've had good teachers that have jumped ship, that are maybe are at a lower step because of the budget uncertainties when we have to do the layoffs and now I'm sure that some of the families that have left us have left just because of the uncertainty in the budgets that were going on. So it was asked, you know, what does this mean for us going forward? And, you know, I, I wanted to put in there what it costs us when we have to pay out-of-district tuition to other schools. There is a common belief that, oh, if you have a student leave or a few students leave, then you can reduce your teaching FTEs. Unfortunately, it doesn't correlate that way. You know, most of the time you don't have all kids leave one class or one grade it all at once, where you can look to adjust stuff like that. But I, I wanted to point out that what we're paying in out-of-district tuition for seven students is what we, what we pay on educating a, a normal classroom of 23, which again, most of our classes are, are over 23. You know, at the secondary levels, we, we cap out as much as we can. And then just to the far right, you know, we currently have 108 students that are non-special ed attending other public schools, including for programs that Coventry offers. So, you know, I think that if we can figure out a way to reinvest in ourselves, you know, and build programs where, where they're competitive, not just in the classroom. Because I think, you know, Mr. Coward, Mr. Levis can, can speak to how we rank against some of these schools that we're losing kids to. And I don't think that the education is that different, but some of the certainty and, and then the appearance of the facilities is definitely having a negative impact on us. And, you know, if we continue to cut out the things that make schools special for kids, you know, we're, it's we should expect that kids are, are going to want to jump to other districts that are still maintaining and offering those programs. So I can pause here for any questions on this.
All right. Are there any questions? Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you. Maybe I can direct this to Mr. Levis. So, um, for the students that are heading out, and you can see in the bottom right of the screen, the substantial difference in the last several years and in how much it's costing for these students to go out. Is it your opinion that that number is likely to continue going up with, based on the last slide, those last, I believe it was four bullets that are continuing not to happen, sports, clubs, et cetera? Will this number on the bottom right continue going up or is it likely to continue going up?
I think there's a lot of variables. This has been happening for a few years. I think Ms. Mandrelli was very accurate when she said, there's a culture here, you know, the uncertainty, the fighting that's going on for budgeting. You know, the fact that, you know, I said as superintendent, I can't, I never thought in a million years I'd be superintendent of a community that wasn't going to have sports or activities. It's not something that anybody wants. And, and we, we plan on continuing to fight to make sure that we can put forward, you know, get a budget that will meet the needs of all of our students, but most definitely. But part of these numbers too are the change of the scenery. There's a thing called pathways. Many years ago, there were 10 regional career tech centers that were developed in Rhode Island, I believe 10. And students in Rhode Island are guaranteed a, a career in technical education. So we had a catchment area. Coventry drew for many, many communities. But then the regulations changed and they allow every school to provide, if not an approved career tech program, but what's called a pathway. It could be three courses. A finance program that has just three courses, but they were able to draw students. And that's what's happened, that some people come to Coventry and they hear this thing, we have a high school of 1,600 kids. They come out of Catholic school or smaller schools, but they're intimidated. Now they can go for a program we offer. They're entitled to go to, say, Ponte Gansett that has a, a new school. Not as many students. They have more bells and whistles in, in some of their programs. And there's not a lot we can do. We are actually fighting these programs now. We're in the process of, of students want to go to a program that we offer. I don't sign off on those programs. But, you know, I, I think there's a lot of variables that are adding to this, but I, I, I agree with you. Mrs. Ludwig, that if we continue down this path, we, we need to expect this to go further and further. One thing, we have many students that are homeschooled for a lot of reasons. And again, every student in Rhode Island is entitled, if the family wants to homeschool them. We know that many families this year, they've had the opportunity to have a parent home. They've said to me, you know, we're going to try working and doing homeschool. But I think you need, the community needs to understand, we do not get a full housing aid, I mean, a full amount of aid for those students that are homeschooled. That'll also impact our, our state aid. So there's a lot of reasons, but I, I, if we don't do something drastic, if we're not able to bring back those activities and reinvest in our schools, unfortunately, I would see these numbers continuing.
I'd also make, I'd also like to make a comment and that is, this is a school, a school choice state. And so it's very difficult when someone makes a request to the superintendent to go to another school. It's, it's very difficult to say no to that particular student. When I was on the school committee, most of the reasons people wanted to change was because they found Ponte Gansett, Foster Ponte Gansett, a much glitzier technical school. And they liked doing that. And many of you have been on tours, as I have, with the school design committee. And we've been to the high school and we've seen the conditions of the rooms and of the laboratories. And then if you were to go to Foster Ponte Gansett and a student were to compare one school with the other, one looks much more attractive than the other. And secondly, once a student enters another school at grade nine, they're not likely to come back. They form friendships. They get used to the environment of the school. They get used to the teachers and we lose them for four years. So we're not just losing a student for one year. We're losing the student for four years and that's four years of tuition that goes away. So this trend started to happen even before we were having budget issues as we are having now. I heard the word, we would expect this number to increase. And I really would like us to take from, out of our vocabulary, we expect. And I think we need to be positive and start brainstorming on what we can do to keep the students in our schools. Not that this is what we expect, this trend is going to continue and get worse.
Dr. Dixon, can I just interject? That, that expect was if we do not take action now.
Correct.
Because that, that, I, I fully agree. I think anybody that, that's involved with the school sees that our teachers, our staff, everybody is fighting every day for our students. And I hope, I, I've received recently numerous emails from parents that are very appreciative of how hard the district's working just to keep schools open. But again, what we presented, what, what, everything we presented so far is based on our current situation today and our current funding today. But it doesn't have to be this way. And I think that's clear. And, you know, the last thing I'll say is, Mr., you know, when Mr. LeBlanc had asked Mr. Wazika that 1.5 and what that would cost, I think we have to reiterate that 1.5 million doesn't bring back those components that Mrs. Ludwig had, had identified. And, and I think that's a big part of, that's why we've been consistent with our ask, knowing that at the end of this COVID period, we're still going to have school to operate and, and programs to run and families and students to take care of. So just want to be clear about that. We're extremely hopeful working with, between the school committee and the council that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Any other questions for members of the council? Mrs. Shockley?
And just so I can check my recall, I believe that at least up until last year, more students were coming to Coventry than were going elsewhere. If, if I recall, we had a greater influx than outflow. So is that something worth thinking about as well?
In our career tech, we, we had more students, I believe, coming in than going out. Don't forget, we have charter schools. Every child in Rhode Island is a student, is entitled to an education in a charter school. Some charter schools are statewide, some are regional. We have many students that choose for whatever reason, they're right to go to charter schools. But in terms of the career tech, you're right. And, and now we don't know. Somebody had sent me an email today wanting to know the numbers, you know? We don't know because those, those applications come in. But, you know, again, based on what Mrs. Ludwig had said, if we don't take action now, those, those numbers could increase also.
Um, but conversely, on a, I'm guessing there are programs that we have that other schools, other students are looking for. And I would love, you mentioned earlier, Mr. Coward might be able to speak. I would love to know the direction we're taking to both keep and draw students here.
Yeah, I, I can jump in there. So, I mean, we've tried lots of things under the umbrella of marketing or PR. And some of the things that we've done, you know, years past, don't work the way they used to. For example, we would go to a community like East Greenwich, we'd set up a table, we'd pass out flyers, we'd have students and teachers there, speak to kids. That's changed. Number one, other communities have their own pathways, so they're not inviting us in anymore. And number two, we're not getting the saturation. So we have tried other things. And we've taken the lead of some other districts. You know, we've tried videos where we can showcase our program so kids can see and parents can see what our programs have and what they do. We've done tours where we open up the school and people can tour through. But the, the bottom line is the, really the only way you're going to increase the, the kids coming into our program from other districts is to have really high-quality programs. And the best way to do that is to have good teachers in there and to be able to invest in them in the way that's appropriate. And so we have very similar programs. For example, we have a very strong computer program that has basically two avenues. One is more about coding and, and animation and one has more to do with like Cisco and, and security. Both, both are high-demand jobs, right? Kids who go through that program could definitely end up in, in a, in a field that is lucrative and in high demand. Ponte Gansett has a very similar program. Difference is because Ponte Gansett is able to tuition in so many kids from so many communities, every year they're reinvesting $25,000, $30,000, $40,000 back into their program to get the newest computers, the newest software, the newest technology, where we are trying to do the same things with far less money. And so we're trying to find ways to make our program strong. And, but we're doing it on a shoestring budget. And, and this is not to say, you know, I'm pitching that we need lots and lots of money to make it work. But the only way to get kids to come into our school is to have really good quality programs. Right now we have some really good teachers and they're very energized, they're very excited. Our criminal justice program has probably quadrupled in, in, in four years. Our teacher has really sparked the interest of a number of kids. And, and we have biomed. And we have biomed and we're doing programs that, culinary is always very popular. So we have really good programs. It's just being able to compete without having the same funding stream that other districts have.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to move on to the next slide?
Dr. Dixon, if I may just add one more thing quickly before we jump. I just, I want to note that several years ago, all Foster Gloucester was known for was no school Foster Gloucester, right? So, and their facilities were deplorable at one time. You know, they were in a situation, they were where they weren't going to be able to play high school basketball because they could no longer finish their floors. A lot of Foster Gloucester's initiative and upward momentum began when they passed their bonds to build a new middle school and to renovate their high school. And it was a tough sell in that community. That community actually lost a ton of housing aid reimbursement because they didn't regionalize K-12. But the community passed it. And when they did that, they built new facilities and they were strategic about it. They used some of the facilities as selling points. They have wood chip boilers that began some of the initiatives with their alternative energy programs. So we have a building project going on right now. And in full disclosure, there are even moments where I say, oh my gosh, how are we going to, how are we going to get this through, what we're trying to even get our operating budget through? But we do need to pause because that is how Foster Gloucester got going. They were, they were a struggling district as well. And they invested in their infrastructure and they were able to expand their programs and start tuitioning in. So I think that we need to keep that in the back of our mind, especially as we continue through with the stage two of the facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, can I just say something?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangiarelli is absolutely correct. I was the state representative for Foster Gloucester and they couldn't, Foster Gloucester and Coventry, and they couldn't get anyone to put the bond issue in to the General Assembly. Nobody would sponsor it. And I was, I signed it, I put the bill in, and I never expected it to pass, and it passed. I think it was about $68 million invested into the schools, into the high school and the middle school of a town of, two towns of approximately 14,000 people total. Remember, Coventry's a town of 35, 37,000, depending on how you count. That massive investment was absolutely the impetus for their growth. And that's why the work of our building committee is so important right now. The other thing was, they had built that school, the middle school, with a projected spike in enrollment, and they never got it. They had to go out and start recruiting people to come to Foster and Gloucester from, they cannibalized their neighbors, really, is what, one way you could put it. And it worked. They brought in a lot of people and it helped pay for their school. So I, I'm just listening, but I did want to point out, I think, I think one of the biggest things that Coventry has to do is invest in its school infrastructure. And it's a good thing we have the school building committee working on it now. I thought I could just give a little bit of historical perspective. But Sarah really nailed that. That's absolutely the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham. I want to be careful that we don't stray too far off into solutions and potential things that we need to do. And we can focus more on this budget and get through the rest of the presentation. So Mrs. Mangiarelli, could you go on to the next slide, please?
Yes, and this one can be quick again. I had put this in during the budget season, but I just wanted to put where our FY 2018, which was the last published per pupil spend was. You know, I know taxes are high in Coventry. And I know that there's a perception that we're spending too much on schools, but I just wanted to put this picture in to give an idea where we really truly fall within the state of how we're funding our schools based on a per pupil.
Okay, next slide.
Three-year projections, where we are going. Again, this is where we're going as of right this moment in time. So this projection was built off of the 2021 proposed budget as it currently exists on November 5. And looking at a three-year going forward, I had to strip out all of the one-time revenues. That includes the use of fund balance of the 1.578. I did go through all of the different expense categories and broad buckets to do adjustments based on base salaries, you know, health and dental trends, purchase services, obviously, that that's a tough one, that's where our out-of-district sits. To look at where we would land, yes, sports and extracurricular is not included. Neither is the maintenance. That's only because that's, I'm going off of the 2021 budget as it stands right now. I don't think that anybody wants to go forward all of those years with not putting the maintenance funds in nor not funding the extracurricular activities. But this is just a snapshot to give you an idea of where we sit. I do have both local appropriations funded, level funded from really FY 20. And that's the same level at the FY 20 probation rate, as well as state aid. Because both of those are completely unknown at this point in time.
Questions from the town council? Ms. Ludwig?
So I'm not sure, President Dixon, if you're going to pivot this way. But we've, we've been talking a lot about, you know, what would it take, you know, the 1.5 versus 1.8? I know that you've talked about, in the very beginning, you answered a few questions, Ms. Mangiarelli, on some of the expenditures that were cut. So when we're dealing with this budget here, you can either get more money, cut somewhere, or some combination of both. So can you just maybe give us a summary that is the, is the ask here at either the 1.5 or with the addition of those four additional bullets, wherever that the final ask is? Is there still going to be some sort of review of cost-cutting measures? Or will we take that kind of into the next year's budget to talk about how do we continue the cost-cutting measures? Because I personally am trying to kind of figure out for the people I'm representing, what are all of the options? And how are we going to continue looking at not only increasing funds, possibly putting forward another budget, but also how are we going to continue looking at the cutting of expenditures where possible, if possible?
I would like to have you hold that thought for one minute. And that is that this is a workshop to have the presentation by both the school and the town. We are going to, at the end of this workshop, take a vote to ask Mr. Wazika to make a formal budget recommendation to us, and that will be on the 15th. So it will be at that time where we'll get the manager's recommendation, at which point the council can either approve, amend, or reject the budget. And then, and we go from there. So at that point, we would still be able to have a discussion, and that will be on the 14th. So I don't know how deep we want to go into what they're projecting to do because they don't really even know what the manager's recommendation is going to be yet. So I'll let you proceed from the, based on that discussion. So Ms. Ludwig, what is it that you would like to know from Mrs. Mangiarelli?
So I mean, the short answer would be that we really don't have an option yet to not continue to look at cost-cutting measures or at a minimum redirecting expenditures to, you know, if we wanted to shift from one activity and reinvest in another. But no matter what, looking at the projected surplus, and actually, I apologize, I should have put in parentheses deficit on there. We don't have an option not to continue to look at expenses year over year. But we are getting very, I'm not sure where else we can continue to cut at this point in time. But I don't, I think we need to kind of really work together as a community because I don't think we can tax our way out of this one, and I don't think we can cut our way out of this one.
I think that was well said. Thank you.
Can I just add something, Dr. Dixon?
Yes.
Just quickly, I just want to be clear, and I think, I believe Ms. Mangiarelli was very clear. The reason we put down that 1.5 had to do with, that's how much of our surplus that we were using to fill the gap as of now. But I don't want you to think that we're comfortable going forward saying 1.5, but it doesn't bring back those other activities. Because I, for one, you know, as superintendent, can't imagine having a school department that doesn't provide or address the needs of all of its students. And we know many students need drama, need music, need art, need athletics as part of their educational, their whole experience. So I just want to be clear. I know I've been taught, you know, many people have said one thing about us, we've been consistent with our ask. There's a lot of ups and downs and variables that have changed. But at the end of the day, we still want to have a budget that'll meet the needs of all of our students. We're continuously looking at cost-cutting measures. As I said before, with the out-of-district transportation, the state transportation, we're not accepting that, okay, our expense is going to go up $800,000. We're looking to negotiate with our current vendor. We also are part of a collaborative, willing to look. Sarah had reached out to one of the local school districts that runs their own bus company. Do they have availability in buses? So, you know, we continuously are looking at ways that we can reduce expenditures and increase revenue. So just to be clear, but we're not, I'm not okay as superintendent saying the 1.5 is what we're, you know, okay with. We're not in a position to even ask. We're in a position just to clarify and say, you know, this is our current situation. But I think, you know, many of the council members understand, I hope that you understand where we're going with this in terms of that 1.5 was just to avoid a structural deficit.
I think the presentation was quite clear. The slides that you had clearly articulated that. So thank you for reiterating that. Mr. Wazika?
I just have a quick question. Sarah, if you were to get the 1.89 million, the full original ask, what would that allow you to bring back out of those four bullet items that currently would not be in with the 1.5 or the 1.6?
I'm sorry, it was on my end, but you cut out right in the middle, so I missed the meat of what you were saying.
Okay. If you were to, if you were to receive the 1.89 million, your original request, the maximum that's allowable, if you received that instead of the 1.6, that minimum that you spoke about, out of those four bullet items, which of those would you be able to bring back and take care of this year if you got that full ask versus the smaller ask?
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I'm just going to go back. So what I would recommend bringing forward, you know, the sports and activities is a little tough because they're not going to be running everything this year. You know, we obviously don't have enough to bring everything back in that 1.8, but not everything's going to be running. For me, you know, my top recommendations would be the physical plant and the sports and extracurriculars that we know can run from this point through the end of the year. The capital maintenance effort, I think if, if we did get that 1.8 and I was able to shift the 1.5 of carryover over to the COVID funds, I think we could cover the balance. It's like, I'm short like $165,000 in the capital maintenance spend. I think that we could cover that if I shifted that over to the, to the COVID funds because that's where a lot of those repairs are taking place. And then the Chromebooks, I would recommend go into the FY 2022 budget. And I would pull out from the FY 2022 budget, the networking upgrades that we're doing right now. So we're doing network upgrades in the current 21 budget because we're getting a 50% match from the federal government. That's about $275,000. It wouldn't cover the full annual lease payment for the Chromebooks, but it would be pretty close. So that would be my recommendation, is that the Chromebooks move into FY 2022. And then a portion of everything else, I think we could, we could cover with the 1.8.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions by members of the council? Could you go back to the three-year projection slide? Other questions on the three-year projection slide from members of the council?
Ms. Mangiarelli, hopefully this does not happen. But if it was to happen, and the state was going to go back on lockdown, how much would we save per week or per month if we were on full distance learning? Obviously, just an estimate.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't even know if I feel comfortable right now throwing out a number. I would be happy to look at that and send it out to you. I would say, one of the things that we ran into last year is that the governor was, we were on a two-week by two-week notice for quite some time. And that makes it really hard to shut down your schools when you don't know in two weeks if you're going to have to reopen them again. So if the governor takes that approach again, our savings will be less because there's, there's only so many, you know, we're not going to lay off staff for two weeks, as an example, when we might have to try and find them and bring them back two weeks later. I don't know if we would get into a big contract negotiation with the busing company if we were going on a two-week by two-week timeframe. On the flip side, if she said, you know what, we're going to shut down from January to, you know, March, or that's a bigger time period where we can look at some, at really shutting some things down a little further.
Understood.
So I know that's not really, you know, answering your question exactly, you know, but we did save over a million dollars being out from March to June. So if we were looking at a similar timeframe, I would think that we would do that. We also did quite a bit of work in our buildings last spring. We took advantage of not having students in there and definitely addressed a lot of deferred maintenance and cleanup and painting and polishing. That maybe we would make a different decision this time around, you know, to do that where the buildings would be more shut down if it was a longer period of time. So it's kind of hard to pinpoint an exact number. Off the top, you're, you're obviously going to have huge savings in your substitute costs. If we're going to, if we're going to shut down buildings and really truly shut them down, then you would have bigger costs in utilities. You know, transportation, again, that could warrant more of a contract discussion about what could happen with the transportation contract. Those are really the big items.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the honesty. And then I think these questions are more for Ed. Have we been tracking the unemployment rate in Coventry? How many tax liens do we currently have because people can't pay their taxes? Because they're struggling because of COVID? And do we know the number of residents that have requested waterman fisc funds? Obviously, non-sewer related. But I just didn't know if you had those numbers. You're on mute, Ed.
As far, as far as tax liens, that won't happen until the end of the fiscal year or the end, after, after June, when that starts taking place. Until then, as quarters go, so there's no additional numbers. We have no numbers on any of that at this point.
Okay, unemployment?
Unemployment, I haven't been tracking it the last couple of months. It has been going down over the last two or three months. I'm waiting to see where the current is. Nationwide, it's dropped substantially, but we're, we're following that. So it has gone down, but not the numbers, anywhere near the number it was.
Yeah, it looks like it's going back up a little bit, that's all.
We're still elevated. If your other question was referenced to
Waterman Fisc Funds and居民Residents.
Waterman Fisc, as far as requests on that, that is handled entirely by the human services. And because of the nature of that, we do not, it's completely confidential. And so we, I don't have any of the numbers on that. I could get a report from Bob, Mr. Robalod, as far as if there's been an increase in requests.
It would just help the appetite, know the appetite, that's all. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions for the council? Okay, Mrs. Patino, do you want to ask your members if they have any questions?
I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Chalkley, do you have a question?
Do you mean just on this slide, or can I ask?
You can ask on any, on any of the slides presented.
Well, I actually wanted to ask Ed. I know a town is not the same as a school, but did we have any savings due to COVID as a town?
Sorry, I don't mean to laugh, no. We've had a lot of additional expenses.
I would think so, I just want to
We haven't had any savings. So at 75% reimbursement, I suspect that money is not going to come in for quite a while. In the past, it's taken as long as 10 years to get, to get funds reimbursed on emergency declarations. So it will normally be a lengthy process before we get some of that money back, on what we
I will interject a little something that I did get. I did check online today at the grants portal, and it has been quote-unquote "encompassed" for at the grants portal and it has been quote unquote encompassed for, for us, but, uh, there were months ago, other towns had been approved, uh, and it's been encompassed for those towns and they have still yet to see a penny. So it's still unknown as to when it will be in, but, uh, we, it's about $38,000 that are, that's coming back, but to when or when that will come into the coffers is unknown at this time.
Okay. Um, I also wonder in this environment that we're in with rates being so low, I mean, I'm assuming the town has refinanced anything that we're able to in the past.
Mr. Sharpley, I'm not sure that's under our agenda this evening.
I feel it's budgetary, but if you don't, then that's fine.
Well, maybe you can ask that question when we get to Mr. Wazika's presentation about the town. I'd like to finish up this discussion with Mrs. Mandrelli and, um, Mr. Levis. Um, we're on the three year projection. Anything else about the school budget? Mrs. Patno, do you want to ask your members if they have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess we can start with Mr. Florio. Any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, Madam Chair. We've reviewed this quite a bit, quite a bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Uh, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I have a quick question, uh, because I was running some numbers today and, and we, I know that sports and club activities are always a topic of discussion. So, um, Sarah, we had, we're at 1.578. We were originally at 1890 on our original request. Okay. So that was the 311,000 net. Um, and I understand that this budget is unlike our previous budget discussions over the past months, you're going off actuals now. So we were kind of prospecting and cutting along the way and, and we're proposing cuts, but that may not have been realized. Or with the transportation, you're kind of, um, backfilling holes along the way here. So I guess if we were to bring back sports, you've indicated in your email that it was $123,000 for approximately for winter sports. And then activities, I see we had originally under our cuts for full extracurriculars was 360,000. By my numbers, the 123 plus the budget request is around 1.7. So is the 200,000 the prorated rate for the extracurriculars to get us to the 1.89?
Right. So it's going to be prorated and also they're not all going to be running, you know? So we're looking at six months and also there's, there, we did just ask again, um, today, all of the principals to say if, if we did give the green light to go ahead with clubs and activities, what realistically can you even run this year? So yeah, so the, the, and that's where I said it wouldn't bring back everything, but that's because it's not bringing back things that are not going to run, which is going to be a little bit of a financial relief for us, you know, this year, but it's going to maintain that 1.8. But yes, you're, you're correct in, in both that it's prorated and also not being run, you know? And unfortunately, even on the sports, we're kind of going on a, like a day by day to see what's going to happen. It's a shortened winter schedule. There's talk about bringing certain sports back. And then there was supposedly going to be a second fall sport season and all of that. We're really kind of going season by season right now to figure out what's happening.
Okay. Now, I think it's important because, you know, obviously we know the context here. We know there are a lot of parents who, and, and students revalue sports and many of us feel it's part of the basic education program, although it always seems to be on the table when we, we make the, no, I don't say always because we haven't done it a long time, but it's always part of the context of the discussion. So I think it's important we're clear on that moving forward. Um, a point that on the maintenance, um, so the maintenance for the buildings, because many know we do have a building effort going on. And this is going to continually coming up. If those who want to look up the law, it's six, title 16 dash 723. And hopefully if we could send that out to council, that link, um, because I think it's very explanatory because that rate goes up next year, I think to 2.5%. And this is going to be a real sticking point in budget going forward because it basically, it's a state mandate that taxed it on, but yet we're capped in our tax rate. So it essentially presses everything else in our budget down a list. Um, and then, uh, two other quick points I just wanted to make to council, to council for context because I know many are new. We've been going through this budget for quite a while. When we talked about an original COVID request, there were things on the table. We had over $5 million and that's, that's been lessened over time. And that's because as we, this very dynamic situation happens, we've had to constantly adjust. And so we're, we're pretty locked in now, but we all know that, you know, depending on what the federal government does, depending on what the state does, depending on what sports run, depending if we go distant learning, all of this is likely to change. The one thing I have seen as a trend over these past nine months is nothing has really gone down. It's just shifted. So my point being, we can get into the weeds on a lot of this. And I have, I always have a ton of questions on the finite pieces of the budget. But what I typically see is that even if I get into the weeds and I've saved in one area, we always get sideswiped with another expense due to COVID. So state transportation was one example. So over the past nine months, the trend has been, even if we can save in one category, we're getting dinged in another. And if, if anything, we're, we're at a higher cost in the end. So my point being is that if there's hesitancy about the 1.8, thinking that, oh, well, you might get Fed money, you might get state, you might get something else. If the projections bear out anything is that that money, even if we have a small surplus, which we typically don't have, it's not going to be a surplus. It's going to be covering the past indiscretions of the structural deficit that's already been incurred. So I, I just don't want the, the council to feel that if there's a little extra, extra in this, you know, and we're trying to shave, there, there's really no surplus here. You know, we, I think Sarah's done a very good job of bringing us down to a very finite level for the best she can in a very unpredictable situation. Um, and the very last thing I'll say is, and I know, you know, we're starting to stay on topic with the 21 budget. I'll just set this seed because I think it's pertinent to either 21 or 22. This past budget, the, the second one that we had, it was a proposal on the table to do a performance audit. And one of the difficult things in my position, and I'm speaking for myself here, is that we all talk about what could be done, and that's under the purview of the school committee. The problem is I don't even know truly where we're at programmatically, programmatically, and what things we could do with a scalpel to cut things. It's not going to be a broad sweep. There's no one solution here. There's likely a myriad of nickels and dimes we can pick up and over time and investments, strategic investments. So I always say it's always going to get worse before it's going to get better. We're probably going to have to deconstruct before we can reconstruct the system. I would highly encourage, I, I've pressed this before, that the council consider that programmatic audit and also financial five to 10 year fiscal plan.
Mr. Murray, I'd like to, I'd like to ask you to wait until we hear what Mr. Wazika has to present to us for the town budget. We haven't even entered into that discussion yet. Um, and I'd like to give full measure to the school budget first. So if we could hold that question and get back to Mrs. Patno's, um, calling on the rest of the members of her committee for questions or comments about the school budget.
And I apologize for straining. I just, I do think it's pertinent because it involves the school committee and potentially this budget, if you should choose to go that way. So I just want that to be heard.
Thank you. Mrs. Patno?
Um, thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, Mrs. Coloneyan, any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. I, as, uh, Mr. Florio said, we've heard this so many times. So we know what inside and out at this point, but I just want to make a comment that thanks Sarah again for her dedication and hard work.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Coloneyan. Uh, Mr. Pearson?
Not to beat a dead horse, but I like beating dead horses. So, um, back to the, the capital discussion and, and thank you, Mr. Murray, for pointing out the statute for the members of council, especially the, the new members to become familiar with. I think we also have a presentation that we've given in the past. I don't remember exactly when, if someone has that and could dig that up and send that to council so they can fully understand the scope of, of the, the, the requirement to fund the school capital for the maintenance of our, our facilities. I think that'd be very important because I think it, the presentation we gave does a good job of illustrating the incremental increases per year. And, and by the way, this is like a couple of years old now. We're already knee deep into this. And as Mr. Murray pointed out also, you know, as the requirement grows to the maximum 3% of our budget is supposed to be allocated toward capital, um, and we haven't really done so except for costs we already naturally incur that are eligible. Um, the hole just gets deeper and deeper and the ability to really fund that on a year-over-year basis with our tax levy cap that we have becomes increasingly difficult. So if someone could find that and, and pass that along to the council, that'd be great. And also back to the vehicles, I strung, speaking of capital, I strongly encourage that the school department vehicle presentation, not that Mr. Cody's word isn't good because I know it is. He sees them every day. But we also have a wonderful presentation. He's wonderful, uh, liberally. Uh, we have a presentation that shows the condition visually of our fleet of vehicles and also, you know, has some descriptive data, mileage, et cetera, things, things that are important. Um, because words do not do justice, uh, the condition of some of those vehicles. Um, shocking is, is a word. Um, I, I would even get in and turn on the ignition in a couple of those, let alone try to drive it to Dunkin' Donuts. So please pass that presentation along to, uh, the council, especially, uh, the new members so they can get acquainted with that. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Pearson. And finally, my comments. Um, I, I want to thank, um, our administration, Sarah especially, for putting this presentation together and always having, um, the, the, the information and the data right then, ready to go when someone asks a question. It's always just wonderful to, to have her back up, um, this presentation. And then finally, I just wanted to thank the new members that, and the town council in general for, um, actively participating in this work session. It really felt like a work session and that folks were really engaged. And I really want to, you know, thank you all for your participation, your active participation. And I have a lot of, um, optimism that, um, we'll move forward in, in a way that's going to be a great vision for Coventry. Um, that's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for the council to make any comments about the school presentation. Are there any other final comments? Okay. We're ready to move on to the town budget. Mr. Wazika and Mr. Annette, we're looking forward to hearing from you.
All right. Let me begin by, uh, by simply stating that, uh, this isn't going to be too extensive. We have got, uh, very severe limits on our side and what we can do based on what, uh, what's being asked for again on, uh, by the school department. Uh, I'll begin with, uh, the town's budget. Let me share this screen for a second. Not that one. Some reason this one does not want to come in. Uh, I don't know why. Not, not really sure why it doesn't want to come in. Um, so let me do this. Our budget was, was not for our original budget that was presented back at the beginning of this whole process was $32 million and change. That budget was predicated on a zero tax increase, a zero increase in expenditures on the town side. To do that, we had over a million dollars in additional cost that, uh, we had to wipe out by cutting numerous line items throughout, throughout our budget. Uh, and it, uh, it resulted in, like I said, a million dollars in cuts over and above what the department heads had been asking for on top of. So we presented a budget and based our budget built on it, on a zero increase. And that's what we've been working this past five months. By going with, are you seeing, are you seeing the screen by any chance?
We're seeing the screen, but we're seeing what looks like slide number three of your presentation. And I really can't read it because everything is so small.
All right. Well, this is just, what this is, is these are just the budget line items that we had. And that's what, uh,
Right.
what you were looking at. What I'm looking at doing here is, and so that's that 32 million that we were looking at originally, and we've kept that. What I'm hoping to do in this point, because I'm looking at 2.2, 2.6, 2.9, somewhere in that ballpark of the range that, uh, that the school department is, uh, is looking for. We've already put a budget out there for a zero increase and a budget out there for 4% increase, both of which have been candidly defeated. So I, I know I've got just very little room to play on, on what I've got available. So what I'm looking at is, I'd like to replace a couple of the positions that we've lost over, over the last couple of years. I'm looking at, uh, the finance clerk in the assessors office. We have actually lost a 1.5 FTE in that, in that office over the last several years. That used to be three and a half people in there. We're down to one and a, uh, two, two full-time, no part timers in a workload that's, that's ever increasing because of all the new properties that are going online, all the new development. The same thing with the human resource floating clerk. That clerk would be a human resource part of the time, part of the time in tax collector's office and filling in at any of the other places. I've lost one FTE out of, out of the collector's office over the last several years. We've lost one FTE out of the town clerk's office over the last couple of years. We've lost that 0.5 FTE out of, out of, uh, board of canvases over the last couple of years. I've lost an FTE out of the planning department, which woefully needs, but to bring that back to where it was to try to handle the workload that they're dealing with. So I'm proposing for the associate planner, two, two clerks, and something we, this town desperately needs is the economic development. A full cost on that for a full year was, would be about $310,000 because we're halfway through the year. I'm looking at, uh, approximately 155,000. And then I'm looking to add for the administrative pay increases for the people that have had, have not received a pay, an increase in over three years. So I'd be looking to increase the town's budget by $242,000 is what I'd be asking for if, uh, we, uh, we go further than that. After that, I figured I'm leaving this up to the council to ask me questions and, uh, John questions and we'll, I think we'll do a better by doing it that way than trying to keep going deeper into, uh, what I'm looking at here. So, uh, we're open for questions.
Okay. Anyone from the council like to ask a question of Mr. Annette or Mr. Wazika? Ms. Ludwig?
Uh, so, Mr. Wazika, um, the slide you were just showing does not have any suggested funds on there for the performance audit that we've previously discussed. Was that correct?
That is correct. The reason, the reason there is not, instead of adding a line item in there and increasing the budget, over the last, over this fiscal year, we have had a couple of settlements that have taken place that have produced a substantial, some additional revenue for the town over what was anticipated. So instead of putting a line item in for say a $200,000 increase, that's now we've got to stop either removing it. This is money that we could use from those surplus funds that were unanticipated and not affect the taxpayer and take it out of those funds. And I think it would be a more appropriate way of funding that than hitting the taxpayers up to pay for it. So that's why you don't see that on there.
Thank you.
Other questions from the town council? Mrs. Sharpley?
Just to take us all really far back, um, when you were originally planning on having the $1 million in expenditures from the mailer you sent everyone before the July, um, uh, financial town meeting?
Yes.
What was included in that money? Were any of these positions? And if not, then have we been able to take care of any of those things?
No, these positions were not included. We have been, uh, we have been fighting a battle since, uh, the beginning of, of this fiscal year with, uh, more and more workload is, is, has come in because of, again, because of development that's going on in our town that unfortunately we don't really see any increase in revenue to the town. It has a downward effect on, on the tax rate in theory, but it doesn't do anything to bring that new revenue in because of 3050. So we don't see anything out of there. While this is going on, the tax assessment While this is going on, the tax assessors office especially has been hard hit with a with a substantial amount of increased workload. And that's why I'm now looking to get that position in there, to bring a position back. I'm not even looking to add. I'm looking to just bring one of the 1.5 that they lost. Same thing in the planning department. I'm simply looking to bring back a position that was there and for whatever reason has been cut out of the budget. But again, the development that's going on and the number of projects that are in play and just everything that's happening, I need to put some bodies in there because we're losing ground. That department is is shoveling against the tide to try to keep up with what's happening. We've got we've got statutory limits on approvals for planning zoning and any developments that go on. And we had we had to have a planning meeting the other night, the night before Thanksgiving, to make sure we could get something in and done in time to meet the the requirements. So these are the things that are going on. They've developed over the course of the last five, six months, just progressively getting worse. I'm looking to fill those holes and fix that. I'm not looking to add people. I'm just looking to bring a few back that we that we've lost.
And just sorry, and just to have numbers to work with. If we were to go with, just to go with the high numbers. The 1. close to 1.9 for the school and the 242,000 for the town. Do you know what that levy increase would be?
The that levy? The change would be about 2.8% because it's about 242,000 with the 1.8, which brings the total change to just over $2 million. The total requested levy would change about 2.8%.
Actually, John, it's higher because it's 1.9. It's 1.89. They're required the the full full load and then the 250,000 on our.
1.8 million dollars itself?
No, it's 1.89 million on the 4% for the school side. And then the 2.4, then the 250,000 on the on the town. So we're looking at 2 million, we're looking at the 1. we're looking at 2.99% increase. If you went to both those maxes, that would be about a 64 cent a thousand increase on on the tax rate.
Mr. Wazika, please explain to everyone what what this supplemental bill that would go out to the taxpayers if the town council were to approve this recommendation or this the situation that we have presented before us, there'd be a supplemental bill that goes out. Explain how that needs to be paid.
Well, that the additional costs that are associated in this would obviously have to be covered in the final two quarters. That's something we were discussing today in in a meeting on how this so but any increase, any increase in the in the levy and increase in the tax rate would be bait would be a separate bill that needs to be paid in in two final payments.
Thank you. More questions from the town council. Mr. LeBlanc?
Two questions. Ed, as you know, it's taken about two, two and a half years still searching for a town manager. So you're adding four positions. How realistic do you think it is that we are actually going to hire them in? Let's just hypothetically say that this budget got approved in January. Do you really expect that we would hire in January? Or could we actually reduce some of the town expenses, maybe, I don't know, by a by a third or by a quarter? I just want to throw that out there because obviously it's going to take some time to actually land those positions and all the associated costs associated with those.
And and the cost, I've got a breakdown. I can send that to everybody if they need it. The 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 finance clerks would be a simple fill. They would be going out right away. The associate planner, the same way, that would be going out right away. The economic development is the only one that we could hold back a little bit on, but that that's a position that we that this town desperately needs to try to bring in what needs to be brought in, and we don't have that. That position's been needed for years. It was talked about, and it's never been funded in any way. It needs to be funded. But we can hold off on on actually doing that hire till later into later in the fiscal year if it came to that. Again, it's a minor savings. We're talking minor, excuse me. The total cost that we've got projected for a full year on that position, which would not be a full 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 one FTE is $93,000. So half of that, we're talking 40, 47,000 ballparking. But if we were doing the full six months, we wouldn't be doing that. So obviously, by month, that's going to decrease.
Just wanted to throw that out there. And then President Dixon mentioned if the town council approves this, then the bill will go out. But I just want to make sure that the town council would approve a budget that would then go to the taxpayers for an all-day referendum, correct?
Well, that's not what tonight's about, but that would be up to the council. That's not up to up to the manager. ITM or TM, that's up to the council on what they decide to do. But tonight, I don't think it's the appropriate time for that. I think tonight we need to talk about what you what the council wants to do, where they want to direct John and I to presenting and having this prep for the 14th to bring it forward to the to the council.
I was just trying to clarify a comment, that's all.
I hear you.
Mr. LeBlanc, get the vote on December 14th. If that's when the council chooses to take the vote, then it would discuss logistics. So we will discuss that on the 14th. So thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments by members of the council? Ms. Ludwig?
Just to piggyback Councilman LeBlanc, so I I just want to make sure I understood. So on the slide you just showed, Mr. Wazika, those four positions, the numbers on the screen were for the remaining fiscal year, not for
No.
where those are full-time salary, we only use halfway.
Correct. The the total, the total for the four positions, including medical ICMA contributions, soup to nuts, is 310,394.95. That's for the full year. Looking at a half year, which we in theory, we probably wouldn't be even get this this passed, get passed in time for the full six months. But I'm projecting a cost of 1155,000 for the half year, and that's all cost for the four positions.
And then a comment you made about, you know, the volume of requests coming into the town, particularly in some of the offices like tax assessor's office. Do you see that as more of a cyclical volume coming in? I mean, we had the revow last year. You have a lot of people coming in asking questions that probably wouldn't have asked questions in the last year or two. Or are these new requests coming in? Like where?
It's it's Ms. Ludwig, it's not even that. It's every time there's a new property brought on, there's there's several days worth of work that the assessor has to do to come up and get that all into the system and get it into the GIS system, get it into the into the tax assessments program, the CAMA system, all of that. There's research that's got to be done. There's a they they deal with all of the change of ownerships. That has to be done and all put in there. This this department was a three and a half person department up until a couple of years ago, and cuts were made by former managers who felt that they could get it done. I have a clerk, I have a department head over there, excuse me, a supervisor, Karen Martini, who tonight left here at about 5:30, who nightly leaves here at about 5:30. She's typically in by 8 o'clock every morning.
Much later than 5:30. She usually leaves around 6:30 to 7:00.
I mean, she is here nonstop to to get to try to catch up and get some of this workload in because of what's going on. And it affects everything downstream. If you have a new project that comes online or a developer who's looking to develop a project, something as simple as getting a lots broken up and addresses built for the lots and all of that into the system before any any permits can be issued and anything else that has to be done, this all has to get done by her first. So there's a lot of work. She's staying nights, and she's been doing this from day one since we hired her. She came from, we were able to get her, she was an assistant over in Charlestown. Charlestown, which has half the half the properties that we do or two-thirds of the properties that we do, actually have 3.5 employees in their assessors office. That's when she left to come here. I have one full-time clerk in her. She doesn't cost me overtime. The clerk does. That's why she's here, three and four hours extra a day on weekends. I've had her in here on Saturdays, Sundays. My daughter, she's in on her own, doing this and trying and trying to catch up. So the workload is monstrous. Same deal with these with these raises I'm requesting. These these salaries have not gone up in over three years. I'm losing people because of that. One of the one of my 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 biggest loss I'm facing right now is Mr. Annette is leaving at the end of the month. I can't even begin to compete with the kind of money that he's being offered in another community. I've got to bring something to try to keep these people from leaving. They're overworked, they're underpaid. I'm trying to fix this problem with with this right now to to avoid a further loss of bodies, of talented people that that institutional knowledge, the loss of institutional knowledge is huge, and I'm fearful of losing even more of it.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the council? None right now. Okay, Mr. Cody, we haven't had any comments from you. I just want to make sure we're not forgetting you. Any comments?
No, not at this time, madam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. LeBlanc?
Actually, Ms. Sharley had a question on refinancing the town's debt. And now that we're on the town budget, I just wanted to bring that question back up.
That's fine. The question is?
The question is, is, I mean, I have also looked at the town's debt over the last five years and the interest rates on, if you look at the financial statements, they have actually stayed the same for quite some time. Now that interest rates are really low, I didn't know if the town has tried to not extend the debt, just do it a rate in term. So get a better rate, keep the the term the same. Both from a town standpoint, but also from a West Ward debt situation. I didn't know if we could ask West Ward to do the same thing. But I at least wanted to bring that question out.
John?
Um, so yeah, the rates are really good right now, and it all has to do with, as you know, the secondary market and then the timing and when it comes to the supply of those types of bonds that go out there. So with that said, we also have to think about the the cost issue and how much we have. You as you've done and you've looked at the the debt service schedule as well and what's coming off in the next couple of years.
Mr. Annette, your voice is fading out a little bit.
All right, how's this? Can I talk a little closer to the mic?
Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you.
All right, all right. So I'll restate. And as you know, Mr. LeBlanc, that or Councilman LeBlanc, I should say now. The debt service includes also the cost of issuance and also the supply that's going out to the market and for the people that are buying those bonds. So yes, it's a it's a possibility to go ahead and do those refinancing, but I the when you're looking at it, my initial assumption would be is it would be a wash almost with the cost of issuance. And yes, a rate in term would be appropriate. But we do have a substantial drop in our debt service schedule, as you know, in the next four of years. So it's something that would be beneficial to look at, but as of this time, with everything going on, I haven't had not a deep dive into it.
I I thought it might be a time issue. I just didn't know, Mr. Wazika, if we could get PFM to try to maybe look at maybe refinancing or.
I have actually reached out to them, Councilman LeBlanc, and he's basically said the same type of a thing, looking at the schedules.
We saw that.
Okay, if I could get if I could get his report or any kind of communication, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, question. Mrs. Sharley, you raised the question before. Do you have another, anything else you'd like to add about this particular issue?
No, but I appreciate Councilman LeBlanc bringing it back up.
Okay. Other questions from members of the council concerning the manager's budget for the town?
Do you have some general comments, President Dixon? The the first two budgets have been rejected. They've been all the way at zero and all the way up to four. I don't want to, I don't want to rehash anything. I just want to say that we still need to put a budget forward that not only does everyone here support, but also is realistic and would get passed by the town. So I I'm hoping that we're all thinking about that also in the numbers that are are being discussed as well because some of the questions we were asking, for example, on people and how that's being affected, for example, on the municipal side. It's it's worthy of us looking at things like economic development. What I'm concerned about is that we start asking for things that are not or are possibly pushing us over that threshold of the people voting on the budget itself saying, okay, well, this isn't an absolute necessity for this year or or that. So I'm not saying that one particular item is or is not. I'm just giving one example for us to think about as we as we may or may not put something forward. It's not only this audience who becomes affected, but everyone in town that we have to think about voting on the budget as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the council?
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes, Mr. Cody?
If I may, please. I believe the estimated cost of going to an all-day referendum with a new budget is somewhere around $25,000 cost to the town, and I don't have any problem spending that money and giving the taxpayers a voice in what the budget should be for the town of Coventry. But I don't want to see this council put a budget forward that's going to fail again. We've already spent an estimated $50,000 holding two all-day referendums. I guess what I'm trying to say in layman's terms is I don't want to throw good money after good money. You know what I mean? Spend another $25,000 to have a budget rejected. So maybe we should think about getting some taxpayer input before we formulate a budget and put it forward. So maybe we get a better feel as to whether the taxpayers would support that kind of an increase. I I hate to call it budget hearings or, but that's what I'm going to call it. We should get some taxpayer input before we put anything forward for an all-day referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Mrs. Sharley?
Just to piggyback off what both Ms. Ludwig and Mr. Cody were saying. I love the idea of getting voter input, presenting the budget to the town. I just want to make sure we put forth the best budget for the town, and we're careful not to make it too arbitrary. You know, I think that it's a great privilege to be able to vote on our budget. But the budget that's put forward by Ms. Mandrelli and Mr. Wazika is something that is planned and thought, you know, done thoughtfully. I really feel like tonight's meeting has been fantastic. A lot of conversation, a lot of questions were asked, and I'd like to use it to make sure that we're putting forth the budget we think is best in hopes that our fellow residents will vote for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharley. Mrs. Patino, I'd like to allow an opportunity for your school committee members to ask questions about the town's budget. So would you like to do, get conversation going with your members?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I guess we'll start with Mr. Florio. Do you have any questions or comments about the town budget? Hearing none, I think we can move on to Mr. Murray.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I mean, without doing a deep dive into the budget, I don't feel comfortable really commenting on specifics. I mean, I agree with the council members. I don't want to go see, go to another third financial town meeting, only see it fail. So, you know, we we don't control it from this point, but I, you know, also think that, you know, getting some voter input and making sure, you know, listen, there's a realization on both sides here. We've been dealing with this for nine or 10 months. We're going to be talking about next fiscal year in two weeks. And so I think both of us have to come together at some point and realize in a democracy, you never get everything you want. The one thing I am concerned about is we ultimately all know that we need votes. And we've talked about sports, and we've talked about, you know, critical things of the the town. I consider us one town. We are. School is a department of the town. And so as we talk about this to the town members, I think that tone makes a difference. And and talking about this as one budget. And I and I hope we can all strike that tone. You know, I I also agree with Ms. Ludwig and Mr. Cody and Ms. Sharley that, you know, in looking at this, the 2.2 you know, in looking at this at 2.9, you know, quite frankly, I have a concern. You know, unless we really explain this on why we're going for what we have. I feel on the school side, we've said the same thing over and over and over again. And I think that's good because we've been consistent. The same numbers come out. They've been tweaked because of the dynamics of the situation. I just don't know if the voters are going to see the whole pie as worth it. So Ed, I appreciate your position. I, working in municipal government, I can tell you that, you know, even where I work, everyone's spread thin and there's never enough people or money. And he's right. People are getting poached everywhere. So it's like we, and I would draw a comparison to the stipends that was brought up earlier. We needed to increase those stipends because it is a competitive market. And you're in a competitive market too. So the taxpayers need to understand that. These are jobs, these are people, these are real people who have families. And they can move and they can get another job. So Mr. Wazika is right. You know, when we talk about, you know, these increases, it may not be palatable to the public that that somebody gets an increase in a tough year. But if we want to keep good people, they're worth their weight in gold. So and that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Kalunian?
I, I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Murray said. And it's true, if you, you do have to pay the good help. If, you know, we had a little saying, if you pay peanuts, you get monkeys. So we, we definitely, and I, I am not in, I'm in private sector. And we too are spread very thin. And, you know, it it does help when somebody appreciates you and gives you a little extra money here or there to, you know, keep you on. I am so sorry to hear that Mr. Arnett is leaving. I wish you luck. But but, you know, this is happens time and time again in Coventry. We lose very, very good employees because we just, we're not paying them and they're being overworked, underpaid. So, so anyway, that's my soapbox. I, I, you know, I didn't have any questions, Mr. Wazika. I just, you know, I agree with what you say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kaluni. And finally, Mr. Pearson, any comments?
I think something, I don't know if this was touched on or or we glossed over it. I think it's important, especially when we're talking about a budget and bringing the potential of bringing something back before the voters for approval. You know, by the charter, the town and more importantly, the school department, which which is what I'm paying attention to more. You know, we're in a 1/12 budget spend based on the, you know, the the previous year's allocation or month-to-month spending based on previous year's allocation. Sarah, when when are we going to run out of money? I know you've said it publicly at school committee meetings, but I think this council needs to know. When when do we start deficit spending? Because the cash flow is stopped based on the current situation. Sorry to put you on the spot. Is that something you can answer or no?
The question was whether or not we have the cash flow to maintain the 1/12 budget. Is that what you?
Sure, the school, the school department especially, yes.
I don't know if Sarah can hear.
You're on mute, Sarah. Okay. Yeah, sorry, my internet, but Mr. Pearson froze, so I wasn't sure if he was direct. Now, here we go. All right, so I I apologize, Mr. Pearson, you cut out right in the middle of it. I wasn't sure if you were referring to the school or the town. So yes, at the last school committee meeting, November 5th, I had presented that, you know, I was looking at running out of cash, you know, in the February area as we continue to draw down. That could be expedited, I guess, if something comes forward with state aid. You know, we're still kind of banking on that. I'm hoping that the state aid does come through when they make up that difference at the, you know, the last half of the year. But yeah, my concern is, you know, we're talking a lot about going out for a second round of, I'm sorry, a third budget. If the council chooses not to go out for a third budget, I I still have a budget gap of $1.5 million. It's sitting in my COVID-related budget. And we can say we want to shift that to the operating budget. It's somewhat irrelevant. But I I still have a gap of revenue of the 1.5 million that I'm identifying in the COVID. So if the council chooses not to go forward with the third budget, we need to still look at using whatever one want to call it rainy day funds, you know, fund balance surplus from the town to help offset some of those COVID costs, both from a balanced budget perspective and a cash flow perspective. So thank you, Mr. Pearson, for raising that point.
No, thank you. Thank you for the information. So it's clear to me that something has to happen. What that is, we'll see. Let's move forward and find out together. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And my final comment is pretty much the same. I I do think that whatever budget the council comes forward with, everyone has to be positive about it and support it. The town council elected officials as well as the school committee. In order to convince this community that they need to support a new budget, we need to, we need to support it as well and be behind it. And and basically, you know, do something grassroots to convince the voters to come out. If if that's what we need to do, then I think that's what we need to do. So I I will remain positive and hope that whatever budget is decided upon is something that the voters will in fact support. But I think we all have to support it as well. So.
Thank you. Well said, Mrs. Patino. Well said. Last call for questions of either the school budget or the town budget. Okay, I see no hands up. I would like to ask for a motion to ask, formally ask Mr. Wazika to prepare a budget recommendation for the fiscal year 2021 to be ready for us for a vote, consideration and vote on December 14th. Do I have a motion?
Mrs. Dr. Dixon, I don't believe you need to take a vote on this. Just advise me you want a budget, we'll put the budget together. That's all you've got to do.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Mr. Borah? Muted. Muted, sir.
Okay, let me, let me say this. Do we have consensus that we want Mr. Wazika to prepare a formal budget? Just raise your hand if you agree that we want to.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You don't even need to do that.
I don't.
And the vote is not on the agenda either.
Okay.
I I think there's a clear consensus. I think the town manager understands what the next action should be. And I just don't want to risk an OMA violation.
That's where I was going.
Thank you.
That's fine. If that's my only mistake tonight, I've done well, but. Thank you so much. Okay, unless there are any more comments, Mrs. Patino, would you like to close the workshop for your group?
Yes, and I just have a point of, can I have a point of privilege?
Of course.
And and that is that I just want to congratulate all of the newly elected town council members. I look forward to working with all of you. And I also want to congratulate our new town council president and our new town council vice president. I I think we have lots of time to get to know each other and 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 have a vision come forward for the town of Coventry. So I wish you all the best in your new positions. And I couldn't be happier for all of you and for our town as well. So thank you. That being said, can we, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:20.
Thank you. Was there a second on that?
May I second the motion?
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. McDonald?
Kathy Patno?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Kalunian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you. I need a motion from the town council to end or conclude our workshop. Do I have a motion to do that?
Motion to end our work session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please?
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Mamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Members of the school committee, please feel free, please do stay on the line. Mr. Wazika, will you open up public comment for us?
Anyone who, participant who's watching this, if you would like to make a statement, please raise your hand and I will bring you into the meeting. I, right now, I see a single hand raised. I'm going to bring in Cynthia. Cynthia, please state your full name, spell your last name, and also state your address, please. Cynthia. Cynthia going once. Going twice. Gone. Next on the list, we have Kelly Erinakis. I'm going to be bringing Kelly in. Kelly, you're you're in. If you would please unmute your mic, state your name, spell your last name, and also state your address, please, for the record.
Kelly Erinakis, E-R-I-N-A-K-E-S, 18 Ironwood Drive. Just a quick question for the council as you prepare for your next agendas. I too would like to congratulate everyone that's on board and wish you all the best. I would just ask that as you're crafting your agendas, would you please consider allowing for more public comments? I think in the past, the council has only allowed public comment at the end of the meeting. And unfortunately, that doesn't allow for, I think, most taxpayers to feel like they can participate because they only comment after you have voted and they can't let you know how they feel. So I heard tonight that many of you would like to know how taxpayers feel, you want more participation. And I would just urge you that as a taxpayer, I would feel more encouraged to have my voice heard if I could maybe give an opinion before you vote on it. So if you guys would look at that for your future agendas, it would be greatly appreciated. Again, I thank you and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And I agree.
Next, we have Melissa. Melissa, please state your full name, spell your last name, and state your address, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Melissa Bebo, B-I-B-E-A-U-L-T, 9 Clover Drive. I had two questions, one quick, I think, might be for Sarah. I remember when we first started talking about cutting this budget and we said if we took all sports and activities out, that it would also be not easy to bring them back for the following year because we couldn't increase the budget by enough to bring everything back. If we do get the 1.8 passed and we are be able to bring back the things that are possible for this year, would it be possible for the following year then to bring them all back or still no?
So that would obviously be the hope, I think, and and the intent of the school committee. Again, this is not something that we want to be cutting out. So, you know, without having a crystal ball of what's going to happen in the next fiscal year, the intent would, yes, be to bring, you know, everything back to normal and try and go back to normal as much as possible.
Okay. And my second question is, we talked a lot about how we are attracting other students coming into our town. But in order to cut down the amount that we're paying for students going somewhere else as an incoming, I am a parent of an incoming ninth grader. And I went through Coventry Schools my whole life, so I was excited for my daughter to go to the high school. What are we doing to solicit, shall we say, our our current students? I mean, lots of other Pontagans, it's already had a virtual open house. All of our other private schools are or already having virtual open houses as much as possible. Is there anything that we're doing? I mean, I know that we're looking at cuts and things, but as far as our pathways are just letting our incoming ninth graders know what Coventry does have to offer currently?
Yeah, Melissa, I can answer that, that our our high school is actively putting together different open houses. And the same thing, we're, we're going to be running ads in in the local newspapers, just like North Kingston did in our in our community, Pontagans it does. You know, we've had to change the way typically we go into the schools. Or we we do bring all of our career tech down to the middle school, so we're going to have to do that virtually. But they're in the process of doing that right now. Part of the challenge we've had, and not an excuse, it's just the challenge we had. Our high school was closed for a two-and-a-half-week pause prior to coming back this week. So we're a little bit behind, but we definitely don't want to lose any more students than we want to promote. I mean, one thing that is important to know that our students, and I think Sarah had said it before, you know, we always hear about performance. And I know Dr. Dixon and I spend a lot of time talking about this. We've been doing a lot of work to improve performance and it's being done by our teachers, doing a lot of curriculum work, always reflecting on our programs. We have our top students go to, we've had, I think, four or five students go to Ivy League schools this year. We have students, two students going to Military Academy. And, you know, we always need to look at improving how we market that. And that's something we've been talking about, not only about with our school building committee, but as a district. We're in the process of looking at a a new website that I think will be much more concise and easier to navigate so that when people first look at Coventry Public School. So I appreciate you bringing that up and it's something that we're definitely working on as we speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up just because time is of the essence. A lot of these applications for other places are due by December. So I just want to give all our ninth graders, as a first grade teacher here in the district and all of my former students, a chance to stay here in Coventry. So thank you all, all your hard work and everything that you've been doing with all of these meetings.
Last, we have Josh. Josh, could you state your full name, spell your last name, and also your address for the record, please?
Good evening. Joshua Clements, C-L-E-M-E-N-T-S, 10 Gentry Farm Drive. I just want to state thank you to the new council members on both side or on the town council side. Appreciate the tone of this meeting, the collaborative effort to come to a solution. A question regarding the development in the town and, you know, the burden being placed on the assessor's office. Is there an anticipated increase in revenue due to growth within the town that maybe would lower the tax rate or lessen the burden across other taxpayers?
Nick, I don't believe we can, the council can, or I can answer questions on this. You told me. Give me your ruling. You're muted, Nick.
Kind of. There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. I the question is whether or not we can discuss whether increased development will correspondingly reduce taxes or the tax burden. I think you can have a general answer. I don't, I don't see any great harm in that. Just your impression. I I think you mentioned earlier tonight, Ed.
I did.
Okay. I apologize if I missed that.
Josh, 30-50 is the law we live under when it comes to, when it comes to the way we 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 tax and the 4% cap that we have. 30-50 mandates that at the beginning of each year, we have to reset our levy back to the previous year. So if we had development of, say, a million dollars, what would have generated a million dollars in additional tax revenue for the for the town, we have to bring that off the levy and start at a zero increase. So what in theory happens is the tax rate gets dropped down by a couple of cents. But when we start putting forward our budgets and the increases in the budgets, we've got to start asking for money that we already would have had in the budget if it weren't for 30-50. So we're forced more, we're looking at force and doing a 3%, you probably only need to do a 1.5% if we'd been able to keep that development. So we don't. So in theory, it doesn't bring any more money in. It does lower the tax rate a bit, but it doesn't reduce anything on our cost. So I mean, it's not, it's it's not helping us. It's it's actually hurting us on when we put more and more houses on. And the work, and the and the cost load that's put onto all of the other departments, the school department especially, with the kids. So, yeah.
Understood. Understood. Appreciate the content, Mr. Wazika. And I'll just close with this comment, right? We talked about advocacy for our constituents or your constituents rather to vote on the budget. I would ask those listening, those of the town council, the school committee. I mentioned this at the last school committee meeting, reclaim Rhode Island. Write to your representative and push for a no austerity budget within the state of Rhode Island and restore school funding across the state. And I'll close with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have, we have one more hand that's up, Madam, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. I apologize. Anthony, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address, please.
Yes, Anthony Carpennello, C-A-R-P as in Peter, I-N-E-L-L-O, 28 Westview Drive. I think it's a very good idea, somebody brought up, that we really need to let our voters know what's at stake here before they vote. Know what's going to be lost. I don't think every, all the voters actually know. And it's going to be very important. And I don't think a lot of voters realize how much it costs when students leave the district. Because quite honestly, my son just told me, he's a junior. There are, he knows of at least seven students who are leaving regardless if this, everything gets voted in, sports, extracurriculars, et cetera. Seven students. And the main reason, they are tired of this annual threat that their extracurricular activities are going to be pulled. I'm sorry, it's the sad truth, but if these people live up to it, they do. But just be aware, I think, I think the voters need to know that this could happen and it could cost the town big money. That's my piece.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, there are no other attendees that want to speak at this time.
Okay, there are a little over 100 attendees joining us on Zoom. I'd like to thank all those who joined us on Zoom. I believe that we had a very rich conversation and discussion between the school committee and the town council. And I hope that each of you had an opportunity to fully express yourself and to ask those questions that you have in mind. There's still more opportunities to ask questions. Because this was a workshop, public comment was at the end of the meeting. The workshop purpose is to have an interesting dialogue, a robust dialogue, and an in-depth dialogue between the school committee and the town council. So I hope that you feel that we've met that objective. I would now like to take a motion for adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? A roll call vote, please?
You're muted, Joanne.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for joining and we'll be seeing each other many more times this month. Thank you.
If I can just remind everyone before we leave, Monday, 6 o'clock, the next meeting. So we're going to see a lot of each other.
That will be the agenda that we missed on Monday, correct?
Correct, the remainder of what Monday's agenda was going to be.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you to Sarah, John, and Ed for tonight's presentations and for answering all the questions. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you all.